We're ready?
Yes, yeah.
Welcome, everyone.
Okay, now, now what?
If you would, let me welcome you to a regular scheduled meeting of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission, Tuesday, July 18th, 2023, in the Veterans Memorial Building. Very happy to have you all with us, those that are here in person and those that are on the Zoom. Welcome. And I did want to say we got over 17 letters of correspondence about our, our case tonight. So really happy to have that kind of interest. My name is William Roche, and I'm the chairperson, and I'd like to introduce the commissioners to you. Let me start with vice chairperson, Mike Rodriguez, Commissioner Joseph Ingraffia, Commissioner Eric Meyer, and with special excitement, I am so happy to welcome Asia King back. So nice to see you here with us. So I've established a quorum, and let me call this meeting to order. If we could begin with a moment of silence, please. Thank you all, and if we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mike?
Yeah, I listened in on the special counsel meeting held on June 27th, 2023, which took place at 3:30. I know Scott was there. He did a lot of the presenting, but they talked about the Housing Infrastructure Plan, which is a county program to do housing and affordable housing. I'll let Scott fill in the blanks later, but it was a very good meeting, and the city did decide to continue to participate in the program. That's all I'll say for now, but there were some things that came out of that that may clarify what we're trying to do, like in affordable by design is one of them, and then another issue came up, which was the downtown design district. How do we work this into that? So I'll just leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Others? I'd like to add quickly, on July 5th, the Planning Commission had a special meeting at the elementary school here in Morro Bay. It was very well attended, it was well received, and for many of us, it was the first time we had seen the inside of the auditorium, which I think was just really fun for a lot of folks, and it, it really reinforced the idea of the historic preservation ordinance that we're considering, as well as bringing awareness to the elementary school site. Commissioners, as a follow through to that, I'm going to make some recommendations. I want to see if I can get your agreement. I'd like to send a letter to City Council, making some recommendations as a follow through from that meeting. My first would be that to ask the City Council to support the city manager and Scott Collins continuing talking to the school district and maintaining that relationship as actively as we can. My second thing would be that we would consider and ask the City Council to consider a historic survey. A historic survey is done by a historic planning consultant, preservation architect or others, and what they'll do is they will evaluate the entire site. The advantage to that is before anything can happen on the site, anything at all, you have to, the law requires that we do that kind of review. The advice we'll get from that, are there any specific conditions around the site? They could be, you know, it could be history, it could be ancient history. Also, they'll talk, tell us about the condition of the two buildings, are they have, what kind of value and how much historic fabric remains. Also, this would involve deed research, because a number of people at that meeting brought up the fact that there might be deed restrictions on the site, and we want to make sure we know about that. So before any discussion can really happen, I think we need the platform of those two things, so we really are starting from a position of information. I'd like to write a letter to that effect, but I'd like to know that I've got the commission's support and will move forward. Everybody's nodding?
Yes.
I would just suggest that this has not been agendized, this discussion, and I'm not certain that we're allowed to make a recommendation as a group without an agenda. I'm not, I'm not certain about that. I don't have any counsel here.
My understanding is we are. Scott?
Yeah, I think you can do it either at this time, or you could have done it as, you know, at the end as future agenda items or final comments. So I think it's.
I'm not opposed to it, I'm just trying to clarify the correct.
It's not really a motion as much as it is, this is a follow through from what happened, and I just want to make sure that if there is need for discussion, then maybe we would have to agendize.
Yeah, and I had a similar concern, but I thought we could do it today. So I agree, I totally support the request.
So everybody's nodding? Eric? Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'm going to open public comment. Public comment in the front of the meeting is for any issue that's not on the agenda. I would encourage everyone who is here to talk about our item B1 under, under the public hearing. We will hold a specific public hearing for that and public comment after the presentation. And I think from what I've read in the correspondence, it would be really great for everybody to hear the presentation in detail, and we want to clarify quite a few items in the presentation in response to your letters. So would anyone like to speak on anything other than the case B1? Welcome, Betty.
Good evening. I don't want to speak directly to the B1 item, but what it pointed out for me is that, oh yeah, my name's Betty Winholtz, that, that it, I think the commission needs to be periodically educated about what bills have been passed, what bills you're obligated to follow, which ones you're not, because so much has come down from Gavin Newsom and the legislature in the past two years, that I don't know if you even know what you're obligated to do. So I would suggest that that might be something you look at for a future agenda item.
Yeah. No, thank you, Betty. And in response to that, the three of us, Joe, Asia, and myself, how long ago was it? Nine months ago? We did that seminar, and the state housing expert went over the bills with the three of us, and I can tell you, that wasn't enough. The complexity in these bills is pretty intense. So we've also talked to Scott about bringing in an expert from the state to give us a specific presentation, and it might not be bad to have it here in, in one of the meetings so that the public can hear the update. The complexity of these bills is something else.
And can I add just a little bit to that, Chair? Couple days ago, a developer decided to scrap building 329 apartments in favor of 104 townhomes using SB 330 as a tool to do it. So this is happening every day. They're just, these bills are so complex, and there's so many overlays, and they're making these decisions based upon dollars, and they just did it two days ago in San Jose.
Yeah.
And I'll add then.
Joe?
And I, I might add, you know, I'm familiar with the concept of a bill as a proposed law, which is to distinguish it from a state law. I'd like, I'd like us to sort of impose some clarification as to what's a bill and what's a law.
So again, Scott, I think we're asking to see if there's some way we can get an expert in. Yeah, Asia?
Real quick, sorry. As part of the housing subcommittee, we have contacted HCD, which is Housing and Community Development at the state level, and asked for consultation, and so hopefully that can happen.
If you have contacts, we have the, the woman from the state who gave us that presentation and at the SLOW conference. So we can get you her name as one contact?
Sounds good.
Just for the sake of the public, I read about five of those bills today, the ones specifically on our later subject, and took the better part of the day to fully understand having read them, and I haven't read them fully in the past. I mean, you can read them, but it's a little bit like, you know, reading anything in the government, it takes forever to figure it out. And so it's something that is very helpful, but thank you for bringing it up, Betty.
Yeah, thank you, Betty. Anyone else? I'll close public comment, and I would like to go to the consent calendar. Scott, do we need any vote on this tonight? I don't think we do.
It's receiving file, so whether you have questions about it or not, it's just.
Any questions, commissioners?
Chair Roche, and this is Anthony from AGP Video regarding public comment. You did have a hand raised in the Zoom.
Oh, 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 thank you, thank you. Could you please put them on?
Of course. Please stand by. Donald Hedlund, I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Donald, you should be unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Donald Hedlund. My wife and I have been residents of Morro Bay for 33 years. We live in North Morro Bay. Can't attend the planning commission meeting this evening, but I'd like to speak on item B1, Objective Design Standards. There are currently, we're, we want to be informed of any housing developments being proposed on the island streets. There are currently two vacant lots that are 10 acres that are zoned for residential. The owner of one of these lots currently has a building application with the City of Morro Bay with a proposal to build a large housing tract. Also, the new owners of 3500 Panorama Drive, the 212 acres, five lot hillside parcel that stretches from Del Mar to Highway 1 off Zanzibar Street, has the possibility of going through the process to develop the panorama hillside of residential homes. We would like the city process of being notified with a yellow postcard to inform us of proposed development in our area. The neighbors and us have been active participants attending planning commission meetings because we want to be informed about development in our part of town. We oppose giving the community development director administrative control over any development in the city of two or more housing units. We live in a democracy, and citizens must have a say in the way the city is developed. This proposal turns important community developments into a one-person decision-making process. There is no public transparency, nor is there public involvement. This proposal turns all of these system checks into a narrow and possibly biased decision-making process. I encourage the planning commission to table this program until it is required by state law. Please vote no to forward a recommendation to Morro Bay City Council with the approval of the Objective Design Standards and vote no to the process of no further environmental review. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Donald, thank you very much, and if you could, please listen to the hearing tonight, because many of those issues we intend to address.
Thank you.
Any other hands raised, Anthony?
Thank you, Chair Roche. Currently, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Thank you, Anthony. Back to the consent calendar, if there's no questions, we can move directly to the public hearing. I'd like to introduce B1, case number Plan Morro Bay, zoning code amendment slash Objective Design Standards. This is continued from May 16th and June 6th, and it is applicable citywide. Nancy and our guests, we'd love to hear from you.
Hi, good to see you again, Commissioners, and welcome back, Commissioner King. I'm Kimmy Nguyen with our design group. I'm here with Randy Resim. So our presentation tonight builds off of the two previous hearing presentations that you've seen. We tried to be as responsive, responsive as we could to the discussion that we had. It was an incomplete group last time, but there was lots of good comments and from the public and from the commissioners. So it'll, it'll look a little different, but the goal of tonight is really to capture all of the feedback that you want us to take into these revisions so that we can forward them on to City Council accurately. So we'll do a brief overview of what Objective Design Standards are and what they aren't, you know, what they can and can't do, and then again, attempt to recap all the spirited discussion we had the last two meetings, and then you just let us know, was there anything we, we missed? Was there anything we dropped the ball on that City Council needs to hear when they see the draft in the future? So I think, just to refresh, new state laws, like we had a public comment, there have been quite a few in the past few years. A few new state laws require a streamlined ministerial process for qualifying multifamily and mixed use projects, and in order to comply, the city needs to adopt Objective Design Standards that would apply to these specific projects. Subjective regulations, which are kind of like the residential design guidelines that some of you are probably very familiar with, subjective regulations can't be a part of the approval process or used to deny projects for this kind of narrow band of eligible projects mandated by the state. So just to clarify, the, the state laws are in effect now. A builder could come by and make an application today, and there would not be many objective standards in place if they, you know, checked all the boxes from all the legislation, aside from things like parking requirements and height and setbacks, which are very clear in your zoning code, there would not be a whole lot that would regulate the look and feel and character of new development under these mandates specifically.
Kimmy, would you mind if we ask a couple of questions about that introduction now? And I'm sorry to interrupt, but the reason I'm going to do it is this was the biggest concern that came from the community. We had over 10 letters addressing this idea of why this would be an administrative or ministerial review rather than the normal process. Would you explain one more time that, one, this is only, the commission intends for this only to apply to state housing projects? That's been a recommendation from this commission, that it wouldn't go otherwise? And what's that?
And mixed use.
No. Only, only state housing projects, right?
Mixed use.
So I, I kind of want to get through my presentation.
That's what Asia was saying.
Just first, I think hopefully we'll clarify a lot of those things, but yes, the applicability is set by the state, and then the additional carve out that we tried to pursue in the public draft includes the two to 10 residential units, so any multifamily under, or 10 units or under. That follows housing element policy, so we didn't just make it up, we didn't take it out of the air. We were attempting to implement your adopted policy on the book.
And again, just to sort of be clear right now, the, the idea of the 10 projects, the commission at the previous meeting recommended that would not be included.
Yeah.
So right now, we're focused, and this is for the, for everybody here and on the Zoom, we're looking at just the state housing project. You'd have to be, it would have to be submitted as a state housing project.
That's, that's correct, Chair Roche. So the idea originally was it was a two-pronged, as Kimmy indicated, policy, and at the direction of a majority of the planning commission, we removed the, the up to 10 units approved also with the Objective Design Standards, put that on the shelf for later consideration for their discussion. And so now all you have is the Objective Design Standard that we would apply to projects that come forward under existing or future legislation that have this in it. So, you know, the idea that, you know, a lot of people brought up that we would want to wait until that legislation was passed is like putting your head in the sand, and we would be, those projects would come through, we wouldn't be able to pass through the planning commission city council process to adopt something to address those things before they would be ready to go, and then we would have no say in what they look like, basically, which is what Kimmy was saying.
Right. And so just to make it, I mean, clear for all of us, if a developer applies through that, there is no chance to bring it in front of Planning Commission right now as a hearing, because the nature of the law is to not have a public hearing on those housing bill projects.
Yeah, and public hearings are associated with things like variances, you had a variance that wouldn't qualify under the state law anyway.
Right.
Conditional use permits. You can't bring a conditional use permit here that the planning commission can condition a project. You could do ministerial approval and have the body that reviews it be the planning commission. Now, all you would be doing, and I referenced this to you before the meeting, would be you'd have a list of things, and you'd be checking off if the project met the requirements of the Objective Design Standards, and so you could do something along those lines, and that's probably something for consideration of the planning commission after we finish the presentation.
After we finish the presentation. So right now, I'm sorry for the interruption, but this was a big, important point, I think, to the public, the distinction that was not understood in the two previous meetings, and so I want to make sure it's super clear, because we're only focusing on the state housing issues, and it gets even more complex than that, as Betty was talking about the housing issues. But the idea that if we don't have design guidelines, we have, actually have no objective design guideline, or objective design standards, we have no way to influence the projects.
Yeah, as far as it goes with, in relation to what they look like, we have a few that we could probably apply, it's not going to get you where you want to go. This process and the things that we've developed here clearly address like articulation and building form and things like that. The ones that we could apply out of the current zoning code were to eventually get certified by Coastal Commission, you know, there's just a few of them that would probably work. We have cross references in the Objective Design Standards to those policies, but there's not a lot of them.
Great.
So it would just be, does it comply with setbacks and those types of things, you know, the development standards is all you would have.
So let me take one more minute before we go. Commissioners, is that making sense to you?
I would just like a brief clarification. You said state housing projects, and what I think you meant to say was project brought forth by private developers under the terms of the new state mandated SB this, or, you know, Senate bills or Assembly bills.
It's projects brought under those state houses.
It's not state projects, it's private projects.
No, not at all, sorry.
Currently could be brought forward that we can't control because we don't have any subjective guidelines.
I would say the way to say that is pending housing legislation.
Mike? Joe?
This is a question for.
With respect to Objective Design.
Your mic, go.
Sorry. With respect to future state bills that are passed that address this issue of, of Objective Design Guidelines in a new kind of housing development, before they become effective, surely there must be some sort of, you know, reasonable get ready time. We'd believe that Sacramento would pass a bill that says, yeah, the bill is effective as of Friday, and come Monday, you better have your Objective Design Guidelines in place.
I think we're getting a little sidetracked. I'd like to, I actually do speak to the applicability. I, I have slides and a few, a few slides that speak to that specifically, so I.
So we'll postpone that question?
Okay.
But we have to get this clear, because we've gone through the presentation twice, and it's, it's not understood yet.
Mm-hmm.
So to take the time now to get there is good? Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to add in, because this was a point that I wanted, I understood was not clear.
Yeah, thanks, Randy.
Over the last couple of years, there have been bills approved that are now in place and are active. Anyone who brings forward a project that meets that criteria, unless they're in Objective Design Standards in this city, there is no design review, no design guidelines, no public hearing at all. It is not a case where the planning commission is making the decision to let someone else decide. That has already occurred, that act that has been taken away from you at the state level, and this is your opportunity to take back some control.
And Randy, this is not unique to Morro Bay. This is state law.
This is state law.
And just say it one more time, because this is, this is hard to get your head around, I think.
This has occurred. The state has taken away your ability to review these projects.
Yeah.
Randy, the only way to get any, any impact to this process is to establish Objective Design Standards. That's the only form that the state has allowed you to apply.
And why did the state do this?
Because subjectivity in design standards leads to, in some cases, uncertainty, in other cases, a tool to delay and, and prevent projects from occurring, and the state has made housing a priority, and so they're going to streamline it in every way possible. And believe me, this is not the end, this is the beginning of this process. War is coming.
If I could just add to that, the state and Governor Newsom has recognized we're in a state of emergency for a housing crisis, and, and I think the approach is different, because when you're in a crisis, you don't keep doing the same thing, you try different things. So it is definitely growing pains for this community for sure, and we've seen that in the public comment, but communities all over California are dealing with it, coastal communities, inland communities, so hopefully that.
Yeah, and Kim, I just, or Randy, which bill specifically refers to this? Or do they all refer to this? I just want to know the bill, because.
They all refer to this.
Oh, see, here we go. That's where the problem comes in, because people are making decisions on a daily basis to convert 300 apartments into 100 condos. So where is that, you know, where's the specificity? Like you make it sound, it doesn't come across that way when developers are saying, we're going to junk the 300 and something apartments, which are housing, and we're going to now build 100 condos. How can they do that in one day?
Well, what, I don't know that specific case, but I have seen other cases similar to that.
Well, here, let's, we don't want to go down that.
But I just want to know where the clarity is at, when the cities are not following that clarity, the way you're describing it.
So thank you for the interruption, and I think that, that clarity is really important. So, and, you know, the public, when they get a chance to comment after your presentation, we can maybe revisit this again, but the thing that's so important for us all to understand, this is not an option.
I, if, if we could just get through the presentation first, I think some initial questions might be answered, and then I'm happy to, you know, answer in more detail, but just to respect everyone's time I'm here today.
I would like to.
Hang on, Kimmy.
I would, I would.
Joe?
I would like to ask my question about the efficacy of a planning commission conceptual meeting, even though the decision as to whether the objective guidelines have been met is administrative. By that, I mean, it strikes me that a conceptual meeting, one, there still might be the inevitable ambiguities in so-called objective guidelines that would need to be resolved. Two, a conceptual meeting by the planning commission would still offer the possibility of persuasion, because we might be able to persuade the applicant to do something different for a variety of reasons. But three, most importantly, I believe the efficacy of a conceptual meeting would be that it would inform the planning commission of the deficiencies in the design guidelines thereby to be amended later.
So there, is there a simple answer to that, Randy, Kimmy?
It's not, it's not applicable. The conceptual review process is not something we can insert in here, it's not something we can mandate. Who's mandating that is the state of California. They're mandating the process that we have to go through, and they're saying, hey, if you have Objective Design Standards, you can use them. If you don't have them, tough.
That's it.
Yeah, I mean, that's literally it. I mean, that's, and it's, and you heard me say this before, it's formulaic. All of the bills have very similar language in them, and like they say, hey, if you have it, you have the Objective Design Standards, great, you can use them. They give you a shot clock in most instances where you have to have the review done by, you know, 60, 90 days, 100 days, whatever it is, and so there's no ability to mandate they go through another process. I understand why you would want that, and because the commission has used that process effectively over time, but that's not something we can put into this.
So at this point, I'm going to give it back to Kimmy, and, but the reason I, this was, I think, valuable for us to take this time is it puts the rest of the presentation in a different light, I think.
I have one last thing, and it's just quick. The, the thing that I think much of the public has missed is that this is specifically around projects which fit very specific affordable housing guidelines at the state level. It's not all housing projects, it's just projects within this very narrow band of, that fit into very narrow affordable housing band.
Okay, so if we could get through, and if you have additional questions, just write them down, I promise we will get to them. We tried to catalog all the, you know, sort of suggestions, revisions to the draft that we have, and we'll throw Commissioner Ingraffia's comment about conceptual design in there if you all agree to it. But just to go to the goals of what Objective Design Standards are trying to do, Randy mentioned, it's about trying to retain some measure of design control over applicable projects. Your residential design guidelines will not be an option to, to use in eligible, eligible projects that the state says, hey, builder, hey, developer, this is now an option for you that's available. that the state says, "Hey, builder, hey, developer, this is now an option for you that's available." So, objective design standards, it is a bit of a shift by trying to ascribe dimensions to things, clear language. You're trying to establish all your expectations upfront rather than wait until you get to the planning commission and then it's a bit of a dice roll. Although, planning commission very effectively, you know, speaks to the design and addresses design of future projects. It's about establishing consistent design expectations. Lastly, because this is all about the affordability of units, we try not to prescribe down to every little last detail of what a building looks like, what the eaves look like, what the materials are. We, at our company at least, are trying to write design standards that are design agnostic, which means that any sort of architectural style could hopefully come through and fulfill these different design standards. So I did want to spend a little bit of time on what objective standards can't do and what they definitely don't do, just because of the comments we were getting from previous hearings and then some of the letters today. So, objective standards can't create new zoned capacity for homes. Zones that currently restrict multifamily homes will continue to restrict multifamily homes unless the state says otherwise. Our standards do nothing to propose to change that. You have a zoning code that you've worked very long and hard on that is currently, hopefully to be certified with the coastal commission. And our objective standards don't get in front of that and say, "Hey, it's a single-family neighborhood here, but now it's available for multifamily." That's not what this tool does at all. Secondly, objective standards can't allow taller buildings or reduce setbacks also that are in the zoning code currently. Residential projects still have to abide by the requirements of the zone that they're located in. And our objective standards layer additional requirements for design on top of that. They don't override height, they don't override setbacks, they don't override parking requirements. So there's still that level of what you've all agreed to in your zoning code to implement. Lastly, and I think we heard some concerns about public notification process, also from the gentleman that left the public comment a few minutes ago. Objective standards can't remove public notification requirements, so all administrative decisions, including ones like eligible state projects, would be under. Those administrative decisions still have to provide public notice to all the properties and residents within 500 feet of the project. And that's following the law. That's not set by the city. And whether or not 500 feet feels like enough to a lot of people is up for debate, but that is still a requirement and these projects are not getting around that. So, we might have talked about some of this already, but where standards apply. We have a little bit of a laundry list in the draft right now. Some of them are eligible to be applied in the coastal zone, some are not. Although, a small part of the city is located outside the coastal zone, as you know. And then the last bullet here is speaking to the 10 homes or fewer multifamily projects that planning commission, we heard you loud and clear at the June meeting. It sounds like we're moving away from that and leaving that as a later discussion. So hopefully, at the end of tonight, we will have a recommendation to council, a full list of all of the revisions that you wish to see to the public draft that's currently on the website. All comments and revisions will be forwarded to city council with the full record of public comments and all the letters that you received today and in May and June. All your discussion and written recommendations and then also our hearing presentations, so they're getting the full context. Just a little thing, the last bullet, we intend to provide a draft as well as comments in like an Excel sheet so that it's very clear for tracking purposes how each suggestion, how each recommendation from the commission was addressed in our revisions. Okay, so I think we'll move on to a short recap of the last two meetings and everything that we heard that was taken into the record and how we have tried to respond to it. I know there is not a revised public review draft yet. We intend to do that at the city council step. But this is just to confirm that we heard everything correctly and we're following their approach that the commissioners have laid out for us. So, a general comment about the approach of objective standards and how other cities have been approaching the same problem came up a few times. We received a few comments to provide examples of objective standards that have already been adopted by other cities and actually some cities have adopted them and are starting to now implement them. So we're starting to see some projects come forward under them. In general, are we meeting a standard of care? Are we meeting best practices in the industry? So, we went ahead and provided a long list of links to objective standards that have already been adopted in other communities, provided that last month. I did not receive any specific comments on them, but happy to talk about any examples that you liked or examples that you disliked. Additionally, to just speak to the objective standards approach that we have taken, planning staff, I think Nancy specifically was able to use the proposed standards that we have as kind of like a test trial. And maybe if Nancy wants to speak more about that later and how that went, kind of speaking to the effectiveness of them. But we shared that that kind of test trial process functioned very similarly to the application of residential design guidelines that you currently have and that you're operating Secondly, we received some comments from the public and from commissioners about providing more information on recent objective standards and cities that have gotten into litigation with the state for basically not wanting to say yes to these eligible projects that come down through these mandates. We also provided that information last month, did not receive any comments. I'm not a lawyer, but I'll try my best if you have any specific questions about any of those case law. There's a few that are pending right now, but it seems like there's a new one every week, so we're just still trying to stay on top of all of those conflicts. So, when it comes to applicability, we heard from the commissioners to remove the applicability for two to 10 multifamily units. The issue might need to be reconsidered in future efforts since that sort of streamlining effort, it was already included in the adopted housing element, which some of you might have worked on and weighed in on. It's part of the kind of commitments that you make in the housing element and the policies that you adopted at that time. So while it won't go forward through this effort, you might expect to see it at another time and then be ready to address it then. One comment that we got from Commissioner Meyer, I believe, was to revise the graphics to reflect a greater variety of architectural styles. And I really appreciated this comment. It allowed us to go back and kind of take stock of what we had, the work we had already done. This image on the slide is what was included in our original draft. We had our architects go back and provide a couple more examples that we thought could be at home in Morro Bay, which are shown below. Just to reiterate, these graphics shouldn't be taken too literally. They shouldn't be taken as instructional or prescriptive. There's nothing, we're also really careful not to put names on these types of styles, although there's definitely elements that many of you could point to and pick out and be like, "Oh, that's reminiscent of so-and-so style." We purposely don't say styles in order to maintain the flexibility that is needed for builders to build affordably, basically. So these graphics are just to demonstrate examples of how these, I guess, these like draft models, they meet the standards that you have already seen and read over. And we believe that our standards do a decent job of supporting a variety of different styles. One commissioner comment that we received was to improve the language of the introduction section, which I think after this much discussion, we have a much better sense of how much more robust it needs to be, how explicit it needs to be and what these standards apply to. I think one of the commissioners lifted up the city of Santa Barbara as having a pretty good example of some opening language. So when we go back to revise, we'll take that example into consideration as well as all the other examples you've been probably seeing. The revisions to the introduction, which really covers like purpose and applicability and kind of what is the point of this entire chapter, will be explaining why the objective standards are necessitated by the state and the state's actions. We will establish a more explicit relationship between the objective standards and the goals of your general plan and hopefully references to the municipal code and the zoning code. In the applicability section, we've already talked about removing the carve-out for two to 10 units. We will also include more clearly stated differences between what is state requirement and what is local control. And it sounds like we're going to go with what is mandated by the state only. And then lastly, the procedure section, which we can talk about a little more, we will include those references to state law to note differences in development review, what needs to be ministerial, what has the option to go to hearing, all those things. We'll do that to the best of our ability because each of the state laws is a little bit different when it comes to procedures and the minutia of it. And we're trying to stay on top of it and reference everything correctly, but it is possible that in five years, there might be a couple new state laws that have different procedures that we weren't able to capture at this point in time. We received a comment about cost reduction options for low-income homes to consider greater design relief and options for projects which provide low-income homes. I think we had a brief discussion of a menu of options, which I liked. In other communities and communities we've worked in, we've allowed a builder who comes in with a certain number of low or extremely low-income units to pick up to maybe two or three different standards that they're like, "This standard is kind of cost prohibitive for me to meet. I'd like to waive it and here's why." So there are different, a couple different tools for how we might approach that. I think the discussion in June also talked about the interiors of the home being really important in reducing costs for applicants. And our objective standards don't really speak much to the interiors of these buildings. So we might be looking to you for a little more detail on what you intend and what you want city council to hear. Okay, I think that's it with my laundry list of the main high-level points that we heard. So staff would recommend that we complete the review of these standards, forward all documented revisions in much detail to the city council and then recommend to incorporate those revisions. Thanks.
Commissioners, questions?
Yes. I believe I was the one who suggested the possibility of a low-cost approach and I have since rethought that in my remarks that I submitted. I said that I had rethought that and no longer supported it. I think what I'm hearing is that for now, the objective design guidelines mandated by the state apply to state-defined affordable housing and that's it at this point? That's my first question.
Yes.
Okay. And the second question is, how is administrative decision-making defined in that law?
So administrative, ministerial are two different, ministerial are two different things. Not all the legislation has the same language in it, so it's difficult to say. One of the things that we see coming down the road and the big one that's sort of pending out there is SB 35, that doesn't apply in most of the city, applies in the little piece that's outside of the coastal zone. But we do have pending legislation from the person, the senator that drafted that, Senator Weiner, for 37? 423? Okay, there you go. And would seek to, you know, remove the sunset clause in there and to apply it in So, in the language inside of both the SB 35 and it remains in the draft bill, it would allow ministerial review by other bodies, city council, planning commission, whatever. Ministerial review means you have no discretionary authority. You're simply checking boxes. So it's either this square footage or it's not. It either has this example I gave previously, I think, is it required, that requires a two-foot offset or five-foot offset. Is it on there? Yes, it is. You don't get to tell them where it goes.
To be clear, it's not design review. It's review of the guidelines.
Yes.
Or the standards.
But it is with a group as opposed to a single person.
Right.
Is what I think the public's been inquiring about in some cases.
Right. I think at the root of my question is then, it could be more than one person and the benefit would be sort of timely information as to what the decision was, meaning the boxes have been checked, it meets the standards of the objective design standards, but we don't like it and therefore we should change it readily. Now, we can't change it with respect to that project, but we would be informed on a timely basis that we need to modify our standards.
I think like anything in the zoning code that's new, you know, I think development of zoning codes are iterative. They're meant to be, we're allowed to change them. So when you come up with policies that either don't work or don't work well or you want them to work differently, we can change those. The benefit to the objective design standards is that it's not going to be included in the implementation plan portion of our local coastal program. So it's not, we don't have to have coastal certify it or anything. So it's a little bit faster review process. It has to go from planning commission, minimum one meeting, city council, minimum two meetings because it's an ordinance.
If we want to make changes.
If you want to make changes.
So if we had, again, I'm just speaking hypothetically, but if we had, say, a member of the planning commission, perhaps even the chairman, and we came across a design project that we're likely not to like, we would not have to wait for it to be built and then public objection arise and publicity generated to suggest that we do something. We would find out in a much more timely basis.
The bill actually specifically states that 423, that it'd be all right if the entirety of the planning commission did the ministerial review. It doesn't have to be one, like in many cases, it'll be a major-
Let's make sure that you asked to speak so we, this is not a free-for-all, okay? That'd be good.
Well, that's very informative.
Go ahead, Eric.
Anyway.
I've made my point such as it is.
Okay. I'm not quite sure where it's going. In other words, when we do this ministerial review, we got a letter from Terry Simons that suggested this kind of review, right? And Asia weighed in on that and sort of said, "There is the opportunity-" that there is the opportunity for the Planning Commission, again, to check the boxes. But that's very different than changing what the boxes represent, right?
Yes, I understand that completely. But again, in a timely fashion, we could determine how adequate the boxes in place are.
Okay. Commissioners, other questions or follow-ups? Asia?
My only, I guess, just in response to Joan, please stop me if this is getting too far down our trail, is it would give us information in a timely manner. But I think that it's written in the... Both a few of the pieces of legislation that are already in place and that are proposed to be voted and have language that... That when, like, a project is brought to application, I guess what I'm trying to say is, like, we might have the ability to look at our standards and iterate them and change them into the future, but we wouldn't necessarily have the ability to impact that project. Okay, I just wanted to point out that the legislation...
In fact, explicitly, we would not.
Correct.
Mike? Just, I'm gonna kind of go 10,000, and I'm gonna get down to where we're at. Okay, this is a 10,000-foot level. Where I come from in Bay Area, I spent 90% of my life in San Jose. That is the hottest market in the United States. There are 38 developers lined up to build and build and build. And they're not even considering this. They're just saying, "These cities have not adopted a housing element, so we're gonna build. And we're gonna just build as much as we can build, and that's all there is to it." So what I'm saying is, and only in fact, only in fact, I'll throw you out the number. 28 out of 109 cities have gotten a sign-off of their housing element. 28 out of 109. Does this scare me? It doesn't. Because people, they're living in obscurity, but they're building like crazy. If you go to the Bay Area, there's more homes being built than anywhere in the nation. All I'm saying is, these objective design standards did not come up during one of my reviews of any of these proposals because I do consulting work. This is not what they're looking at. They're looking at just housing elements. If a city's got approval, none of them have. San Jose hasn't, but it's building more than anybody else in the nation. How can that be? How can that be?
Yeah, if I could speak to that, I'm not exactly sure which development, and I have not spent...
38 of them. Not one, 38 of them.
Right. So I'll look at the list. If you'd be kind enough to forward them to us afterwards.
Yeah. And they're all in lawsuits, of course, right?
I believe we're talking about Builders Remedy, which does apply to cities that don't have a certified housing element. For whatever reason, HCD has reviewed their housing policies and said, "Not good enough yet. Go back to the drawing board. Go back and rezone. Come back with new policies." So like you said, a lot of those cities are in that limbo. Morro Bay is not one of them.
We haven't.
Thankfully, we do have a certified housing element. So I don't... I'm not sure if it's productive to...
But I want to get to our level. Remember, I wanted to show you what's going on in the hottest market in the world. And then you jump back to where I live, okay, Morro Bay. So let me ask you the question. Would Morro Bay be in violation of any state laws or statutes if it did not adopt an ODS? Would we be in violation of any state laws or statutes?
No.
Let's start there. Number two. How many projects do you foresee coming forward to the city of Morro Bay using ODS as the tool to get its project built? In other words, yeah, how many would you see coming forward?
I don't think it's our role to make that projection.
Yeah, we couldn't project that.
Okay. What do you mean, you can't project what? I'm just asking.
The number of projects.
Yeah. Well, I'll project it for you. So we, you know, we're not in violation of state law. That's really important. We can't be in violation of state law or statute. How many projects do I foresee coming forward using ODS as the tool to get its project built in one year? Maybe one. In two years, maybe one. In three years, maybe two or three. I'm just projecting for you because I know what's going on in Morro Bay. I bought in an area that was developed five years ago, 14 units. So I know the...
Where are you taking this, Mike?
Well, I'm trying to bring it to Morro Bay. What I'm saying is, so we're not in violation of state statute. How many projects would come forward? And would it be better? This appears to me to be a policy decision. Does the city want to adopt objective design standards for its city? I'm a planning commissioner. I like being a planning commissioner. I don't want to be a policymaker. I would rather the City Council make this decision because I don't think we're being threatened by anything because of where I come from. There is no threat. I see this every day. People are changing their minds on what to build and how to build them, every day. So all I'm saying is, I prefer that this...
Let's take that to comments.
Yeah.
If there's no other questions. Do you have anything else?
No, no, that's it.
I have a couple quick questions. The density bonus ordinance, which was SB 290, does that apply to Morro Bay?
We have a density bonus ordinance in place.
Well, the state SB 290. The reason I question it is, Kimmy's report, she said there is no menu item to raise height. Well, there is an SB 290, right? Or to reduce parking. Both of those are menu items depending upon the amount of affordable housing that you contribute.
So I'm not familiar with the exact text, but generally, state density bonus law does allow for some increases because builders are coming forward with a certain number of affordable units. And they're saying, "In order for me, for this to pencil out and for you to get your extremely low, low-income units, I need more space."
Right.
So that usually means a little more height. It usually means fewer parking spaces. Randy could probably speak to this.
Right. But you said we can't... You were saying something, you can't raise height based on the state legislation. But I think...
Not through objective standards. Yeah, it's...
Oh, maybe I misunderstood.
Yeah. She was simply stating that the objective design standards don't allow you to do that. If the state assembly bills allow whatever they allow, because there is like 30 or 40 pending pieces of real housing legislation out there. There's a... It runs the gamut of the things that it allows.
But isn't it a reason? The reason we want objective design standards is because if someone does come in and asks for an additional 10 feet, which is a menu item, how do our objective design standards respond to that?
Well, if we're going through density bonus that's not part of the legislation, and just the city's density bonus laws, they wouldn't be going... It wouldn't be using legislation.
But you could use the legislation. You could use 290, right? Which is...
You could...
Administrative again, right?
It is. And I'd have to review the transit requirement, how close you have to be to a transit stop. Is it a major transit stop? Does it have that inclusion, that piece of in it? Some of the legislation deals with that piece of it. It says, "Hey, it's housing by right, but you have to be so close to a transit hub." And that transit hub has to have, during AM and PM peak hours, oftentimes, not always, has to have, you know, they say for us would be bus service at least once an hour.
So I guess that's the question. You know, can 290 apply to us? And what are we looking at around those issues? And that brought me to one of the comments I made last time. I was interested in form-based zoning. And is there any way that that might fit into the objective design standards? The ability of that is that if we could do it in a simple way, that would help with this idea, for example, of additional height. If it would happen, it would help with the idea of buildings that are not necessarily predictable on street faces or if they're free-floating, that kind of thing. I don't know. Did you guys look at that?
Form-based code and the application of it is not simple. It can get pretty complex. And if administered... If written well and administered well, I think there's a general agreement that you get a good product. That is not what this is. This is a program to take your design guidelines and turn them into objective design standards as best as possible. That would be another layer. Perhaps as you take a look back at how your process works, maybe that's another alternative in the future. And it would meet the objective design standards rule. You could have a form-based code.
You could. I mean, that was your answer to me last meeting. You said it would be possible.
It would meet that, but that's not what we're doing here.
If I could just clarify for everyone who doesn't know what a form-based code is. A form-based code is one that regulates based on what the outside of a building looks like. It doesn't speak to very much about what goes on in that building. So it cares much more about, you know, what is the frontage of the building? What do the windows look like? What is the height? But it doesn't say much about whether this is a place of business or if it's someone's home. So that's the critical difference. And it is complex, like Randy said. So unless that is something that the city is ready to take on and really sees a vision for, it's not what we would recommend, which is why we didn't go that way. But it is totally valid to meet objective standards as required by the state.
Okay, so that answers my question. I disagree, but we can... We'll visit that later.
Chair Roche, I do have... So we had a conversation about this earlier. And so I think the policy, you know, the example that you gave me was breaking up building frontages and that type of thing as a form-based policy that you see in form-based codes. That exists. Those types of things, the policy that you talked about does exist. And maybe that's the conversation we can get into is, does our ODS policies do the same thing? Or something very similar? That's probably a worthwhile conversation.
Yeah, I would like that. Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Question, Eric?
Yeah. So about a month ago, we were a little bit more... We were asked to provide comments and suggestions on the draft. And it was my assumption that we would be receiving a revised draft. Why have we not been given a revised draft?
Well, we can't do revised drafts. We don't have concurrence on the commission on the policies. Like, just because one of you gives us an idea about something, that's not concurrence by the commission.
Okay.
So we came up... So this is why it was done the way that it was here today. And I think we want to, like, for the individual items that you are very interested, we summarized them as best we could. But that's not... That's just us summarizing what you had to say. The individual commissioners should speak up about what they want or the changes they want. And then you should debate, like, whether it should be included or not.
So Eric...
Today, you're telling us that we are now being asked to just submit to the City Council, and not... We'll never even get to see the revised draft.
Well, if you tell us what to put in, we'll put it in. Yeah, I mean, Commissioner Meyer, we're here to listen to you. If it's not ready, it's not ready. But if we can get clear direction, then we can do what you tell us to do.
So the outcome, I would hope, at the end of the meeting, we go through the comments, we hear from the public, we make a motion. And I'm, you know, we make that motion to approve those. Do we send it to City Council without looking at it? No. I think somehow we need a review process. So we need to decide how that would happen. Do we need another meeting for that? I don't know.
Or we come up with adjustments, decide on them as a group, and then forward the draft with those adjustments to the City Council.
So let's, I mean, let's go through the process and then see if we can be content with the outcome. Good enough? Let's see. I'm ready to move to public comment. Is everybody good with that?
Yep, yep, yep.
Thank you for your patience. We're very anxious to hear from you. I think the... Whatever clarity you can bring to this is important for us. You're welcome to begin public comment. Thank you, Betty.
I guess so. So Betty Winholz again. And I want to say I'm very grateful for all of you making comments and being concerned. And you've demonstrated that by making those lists. I'm sorry they didn't get into the draft. I also want to say that if you did not, because I did recommend this last time, that if this really is about affordable housing, and I would like that defined. Is that low-income housing? Is that moderate housing? What does that mean? Because to me, affordability doesn't have a definition. Okay? So most of our low-income housing is on South Main Street. It's in South Morro Bay. It's not in North Morro Bay. In North Morro Bay, you've got condos. A lot of apartments have been converted or they were built as condos. But your low-income housing is off of South Main Street or Monterey Street or Napa Street. And those are not expensive-looking buildings. And they're simple, which makes them, hopefully, mean that the rent or the abilities to buy them would be less. Because what I see in this draft hasn't changed is that it's gonna make them more expensive. And that's not what we need. You know what we need is people that work in the tourist industry, that work for minimum wage, that need a place to live. And that's what I would hope that you'd be focusing on because that's what they said. This is what this is about, affordable housing. And so I want to say, and I appreciate Commissioner Rodriguez's question, is you are not out of line if you do not approve this. And I think that's important for everybody to know because it's not law yet, because the 423 hasn't passed yet. So I don't think you can say we have to follow 35. I don't think you can say we have to follow 330 because it says in the document that the Coastal Act can override that. And it says in AB 6, again, that the Coastal Commission has jurisdiction here, not otherwise. So I think what that leaves us with is 2011. And maybe there's another one that I'm not aware of. So I think it's very important to be specific. And I appreciate the consultants putting the numbers on the board because that's what we want to know, what we're looking at and what you have intent of. I think the height question that the chair pointed out was very important because we do have density bonuses in Morro Bay, and they include height limits. And that really pisses us off. And so we want to know if that's included in these design guidelines. Can these things be appealed to the Coastal Commission? I'm assuming not. I don't know. It's not said in any of the things other than these two items, AB 6 and 330. So I think that's important to point out. I thought there were a lot of good comments in what the people said, the 15 people that were against doing this as it's written. And I would hope that you would go through those, because I thought several very specific suggestions were made. And I think it would be honorable to honor those people and the time they took to write those. And you mentioned one, which was Mr. Simons, and there was a Ms., hmm, someone else, or with an M. She had made some good suggestions.
Peggy Mandeville.
And I, yes, Mandeville, thank you. And I do think that it's important to look at the content as well as the outside in terms of affordability of these things. And also, another, the two that disagreed with this were the Chamber of Commerce and Mr. Mandeville, who works for RRM, I believe. And, but even he said there needs to be a matrix, or someone said there needs to be a matrix that shows, and I think you talked about this, how this meets the general plan. Because that's one of the goals of the objective design guidelines, is that you meet our standards that we've already passed in our general plan. I'll try to sit down.
Betty, can I ask you a question, Betty? Only because I know you know your stuff. Those projections I gave about how many projects, what do you think?
Absolutely, absolutely. You're right on target.
I haven't lived here all my life, but I've lived here long enough.
I've lived here almost 40 years, and there's no reason that what you said isn't true.
Thank you.
Welcome. Tell us your name, if you would.
Thank you, Nicole Dorfman, Morro Bay resident. And I just want to say, a lot of this was over my head. So thank you to all the smart people in this room who have really done a tremendous amount of research and are really trying to figure this out for the best of our community. So thank you all for that. I just have a couple thoughts on what I've heard. One of them is this notion, could we, and is it desirable to establish these objective design standards, but maybe then have a trigger? So that they actually only go into effect should the law take us out of the exemption with the coastal zone? So just one thought in doing that. Another question I had was, also talked about, was waivers and exemptions. So should a developer come in with these guidelines and want an extra 10 feet? Does that then push them out of these objective design standards? And then say, oh, well, now you need to do the full process? Or how does it work? So that was just a question that I have, how that happens. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Others?
Do we want to have staff respond to her question?
I'm going to do it at the end, thanks.
Good evening, and my name is Natalia Merzouya, woman of Morro Bay. I would just like to speak a little bit on this, because I missed the deadline for sending a letter in at the right moment. But I agreed entirely with the first Zoom speaker. I thought what he said represented everything that I also felt. And I feel that it's kind of ludicrous that the legislature, which is responsible for the response of the pandemic, which, again, is responsible for the state of emergency that we're now facing with this egregious amount of homelessness and need for rapid building and all the things that they're attempting to do. But the legislator, legislature, I think, failed us miserably. If you look at the standards of what happened as a result of the pandemic, because of the way it was managed here in California, California, New York, and a few other states that followed the guidelines most closely of the WHO had the worst results, the highest death rates. And, you know, that we're following this legislature, I think, is, again, ludicrous. And that people are going to wake up and look at the people that are voting for this rapid streamlined building thing and say, well, those people aren't getting reelected. And then, when all of it's changed, where are we going to be? Because I can't imagine this continuing. And I will end there. I don't want to go over my time limit. Thank you.
No, thank you very much. Others? Welcome.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. Thank you for asking and really fine questions and pointing out facts. We've never had this kind of a planning commission before that I can remember in the last 45 years. My name is Nancy Bast. I've been here for 45 years. And I sent my comments in, so I won't repeat those here. But it occurs to me that our democracy is being threatened by the state. And I feel that there's going to be a huge backlash to this, these mandates, because nobody wants to ruin their towns by having huge amounts of growth. Thank you for doing what you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Nancy, thank you very much. Welcome.
Good evening. Judy Setting, and I've lived here since 1967. And I want to say thank you to each of you, because this is one of the first meetings I've been at, and I've really felt like you guys are listening to the residents of Morro Bay, and you're not being pressured by city staff or consultants or anybody. You're asking great questions, and you're giving it tremendous thought. I appreciate that. I don't know if this even applies, but does anybody know what the formula is that the state is using to mandate how many units we have? Have I just missed that information? I'm just curious what is being asked of us with these mandates.
We'll go through that with staff, and they'll talk about the housing element. So yes, we can give you an answer tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Others?
Thank you, planning people. I do appreciate all your hard efforts in this. It's a lot of time and much appreciated. I just feel like you need to retain as much of your voice as possible in this affair. It shouldn't go to one person. It shouldn't, you, we need you to be voices, because you are good voices, and you do beautiful review of everything. I'm not sure I heard anything about the environmental review, if that's still involved in this plan, the CICA. And then I understand there is an ordinance that the planning commission must see the final draft before it goes to city council, so that you stay involved. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And thanks for the support. Others?
Pretty fast question.
Welcome. One more time, I'm sorry.
Yes, tonight, going to be this is it? Or are we going to have any discussion at all about the roundabout? Because that's what I was thinking.
The roundabout's not agendized tonight?
The roundabout isn't voted in yet.
But it's not agendized for our meeting tonight.
Well, I'll just wait for the city to get a chance to vote on all of this. That's basically what I'm after. I've heard this kind of thing too many times here.
Yeah, sorry. Others? Anthony, do we have anybody in the queue?
Thank you, Chair Roche. Currently, I see one hand raised, Erica Crawford. I'm going to go ahead and allow Erica to talk. Erica, you should be unmuted.
Hi, thank you so much, commissioners and community. I'm sorry I'm not there with you today. Just very brief comments. We did send in some comments via written agenda correspondence today. I'd like to just remind the community and the commissioners that the Chamber of Commerce is a part of this community. 85% of our volunteer leaders serving on our Board of Directors and on our committees are Morro Bay residents themselves. 95% of them are Estero Bay residents, and 100% of them are county residents. So many of our business owner-operators in our community work and live in this town. We are us. In fact, we share a question that was raised earlier by a public commenter about appeals to the Coastal Commission on projects that are being processed through these state guidelines. And in our comments, we asserted a recommendation that the objective design standards have as much of Morro Bay's fingerprints on it as possible, because we recognize that this will streamline permit processing and that the work would be done in advance to make sure that these projects would be as reflective of our community's desires as possible. So thank you so much for the thoughtfulness of this discussion by the commission. And again, I apologize I'm not there with you tonight, and have a great meeting. Thank you.
Erica, thanks for calling in, and thank you for the letter, too. We appreciate it. Let's see. Before we get into the questions, because I'd like to take some time with them.
Chair Roche.
Oh, yes?
Just had another hand raised in the queue. And I'm going to go ahead and unmute Kristi Benclive.
Welcome, Kristi.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on the consultant's presentation, the diagrams that were presented that had been revised since the last meeting. And I appreciate the attempt to take in the commissioner's input at the last meeting, but I'm not sure that it was intended that the diagrams be more stylistic than they were before. So my suggestion, I'm a licensed architect, and I would recommend that we do not show diagrams to applicants, because I do think that what Commissioner Meyer mentioned at the last hearing is an issue, that applicants take that as a given, that it should look like what we are showing them. So I wonder if there's a consideration for not showing diagrams at all. Thank you.
Kristi, thank you. Thanks for calling in. Anybody else, Anthony?
Thank you, Chair Roche. Currently, I do not see any raised hands left in the queue.
So what I'd like to do at this point is take a five-minute break before we start in on getting an answer to your questions. I'm going to leave the public comment period open, so that we can have a dialogue with the public on some of these more complex issues. So let's break for five minutes, and then we'll resume with staff and our consultants answering your questions.
Before everybody breaks, I just want to say that I had to use the restroom.
Yeah.
And when I was back in the hallway, I noticed there's an odor of natural gas permeating in the hallway.
Oh.
And so I thought I should report.
We'll go check that right away, thank you. Welcome back, everyone. Commissioners, if we're ready. And if we could ask our guests and staff, what I'm thinking we do next is go through the questions that we've been presented by public comment and the letters, and see how to respond. And we did have, to my count, 17 letters on this issue. 10 of them were specifically about the administrative process. So I think we've answered those. We got no additional questions on that. So I think we're good with that. I'd like to kind of keep going with that. One question I did get from Erica Crawford. Is there an appeal process to any of these state legislated projects?
They would follow our normal appeals process. So if you had a house that was, say, in the appeals jurisdiction, it could be, if you had a project that was in the appeals jurisdiction, it could be appealed, you know, from the administrative decision that we make to city council and then to the Coastal Commission. But you're going to end up with a no substantial issue in front of the planning commission, in front of the Coastal Commission, because the ODS isn't going to be in our, isn't going to be in our LCP.
So it's a normal appeal process?
Correct.
I got a question. I think this was Eric Justin. The ODS, how are they different than design? Okay. Terry Simons, I did mention, he talked about a three-person project review. My question is, based on what he was asking for, if we bring it back to commission as an ministerial item, that happens after your review? If we wanted input before? How does that work in terms of staff's input?
If, if you, it would look just like every other project that you review. You would get a staff report that shows how staff did the analysis. You would be able to look at it and concur or not. If you didn't concur, we'd have to have very specific reasons why you did not. And, and then we would have to move that forward. If you didn't concur, then we'd have to provide that information within a certain timeframe back to the applicant.
Got it. Betty asked about affordable housing. Like, say, the density bonus one? I know that's a percentage. Are the other bills 100% affordable? Are they percentages?
Well, I mean, they're all over the board. There's different.
Well, give us an idea, a rough idea.
I think the least I've seen is 20%. And then the, I think it goes all the way up to 100%.
But it, it does vary, and it's per the menus, I think, quite often, too, right?
Yep. And like, if the SB 35 or 423, if it comes through, there's options inside. It's a very complicated bill. So if you, you know, if you do this much affordable at this level, you get X concessions type.
Then Betty also asked about the level of affordability. But again, I think that's part of the complicated formulas, right?
It's all dictated by the legislation.
But it's not a simple answer, I don't think.
It's not.
Yeah.
Do we want to address, like, the definition of affordability in there?
Sure, please.
Yeah, so affordable housing, defined by the state, usually just means subsidized housing. It, it means the home, whether it's for sale or for rent, will have some sort of subsidy attached to it. That usually means a rent cap or deed restriction for 40 years, saying this home will be rented at this price and can't be subject to increases more than that.
So there's a subsidy, and it's regulated, right?
Right. So, yeah, it's regulated through the state and through the local housing authority. So those, like, I know it gets into jargon about what is extremely low, what is low, what is moderate. Those are all based off of how they match up against our area's median income. So that's Slow County as a whole. Slow County doesn't have the same median incomes as the Bay Area or as Orange County. So we're being held to different affordability standards. They're generally a lot lower here, but...
Betty also asked about the sites. These sites can happen anywhere in town that is zoned...
For multifamily or...
Multifamily residential.
Multifamily or mixed use, yeah.
So that could happen downtown? I mean, that's the way it is right now. And that's important for us to understand, that these could end up on Morro Bay Boulevard. Am I wrong?
Yes. They could end up on Morro Bay Boulevard. They could end up, and if they changed the, like, some of the legislation out there, you know, looks at some of these things, like the major transit stop thing, and talks about taking it out. Now, that stuff hasn't been as popular and hasn't been running through as much, but I've seen a couple of bills that had that in there. The idea being that they wanted to apply it everywhere. And a lot of, a lot of smaller towns were getting away from it because they didn't have major transit stops. But they said, well, a lot of small towns aren't building housing either, so, anyway. Part of the conversation.
Ms. Dwarfman talked about a trigger, but your point is, we can't wait for the trigger because then we wouldn't be able to get it done in time.
The trigger, unfortunately, the way the process works for us to update the zoning code, doesn't matter what you call it, it still goes to planning commission and city council.
And so we can make this as good as we can make it, but what's, once it's in place, it's kind of benign. It just sits there.
Yep, until we need it.
And then I guess the last point relative to this is, we can always come back and adjust it. So one of the questions that I think Mike had was about the idea of the downtown design district. As we develop that and we get guidelines there, we could always look at incorporating them into these objective design standards in the future through that three-meeting process.
I, I think that it's going to be informative to this, in some way, shape, or form. I mean, we're not, we're just starting it. But, but it makes sense to me that that's what would happen.
But rather than wait for that, it makes sense, you're suggesting, and I think I'm agreeing, to get this in place.
I think it's, it's a necessity because we don't know what's going to come out of the legislature. We don't know. And we don't want to be scrambling, trying to figure it out, and then have a project land in our lap that we don't have these in place for, so.
So Judy asked us about where the requirement for affordable housing comes, and I'm assuming that's the housing element.
Yeah, it's set by arena numbers.
And is there any, like, formula to that? Is that, I don't think she's here. Oh, there you are. Is there any answer amplification you can give to, to help her on how those numbers are established?
It's usually established through SlowCOG, your local council of governments. So they have a regional take on, you know, economies and markets and cost of living here. So based on state guidance, I believe SlowCOG is the one that generates an estimate for how much housing we as a region need to...
Yeah, and that was what I presented at the beginning. The council did talk about the housing infrastructure plan, which the region is working for regional affordable housing. So that's where it falls off. It's right in there, so, thank you.
I think, I was on the committee at SlowCOG that devised how many houses go to which communities in the past as a county planning commissioner. And it's, it gets pretty complicated, but I'll try, and as briefly as I can, it's, it looks at where people actually live right now and where jobs are right now. And it looks at the, the amount of transportation happening between where the people live and where the, and where the jobs are. And it tries to combine the needs of lower greenhouse gases in a way that puts the housing where the jobs are and the jobs where the houses are. And then that we can only zone in certain ways. The zones that we try to push and the numbers that are being pushed are based essentially on the number of people that live in the county and where the jobs are and how to get those, those people that, that work in certain price points or certain, sorry, salary points, more housing at certain levels. And so each community is given a, I don't know what the right word is. It's a total, essentially, of how many houses within very low, how many houses within the low, how many houses within median affordability they should be developing. And the zoning codes of those communities are thereby updated through the new, the new community plans to provide for zoning for those additional units. And that can come in the form of upzoning and zones, like, R4 might go to, I mean, R3 might go to R4, or in some communities, like in San Luis Obispo, they might add more land outside of town and add more housing that way.
And if, if, if I could ask, Kimmy and Randy, how many cities make those goals?
Very few, yeah.
Like, hardly any?
They're very hard to meet those goals. And where a lot of cities do have some success is providing in moderate-income units. The extremely low and low-income units are just, because they're subsidized, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're subsidized, so you need to build other types of housing in order to pay for these subsidies. So that's where a lot of communities tend to fall short. I don't know the exact number off the top of my head of who actually...
I was just trying to make the point that it's rarely met.
And some communities have shortages, like water, for instance, in Los Alamos, some water in Cambria, therefore, they aren't prescribed more housing because it's physically impossible because they don't have water. And those numbers then get jacked on to the other cities. So the other cities have to make up for it.
Yeah. We've got another question. Environmental review. How does that work underneath these eligible by state law projects?
It's different by bill. A lot of them, you know, some of them are exempt. If you meet certain requirements, you're exempt from CEQA, you get a CEQA exemption. Others, you have to comply with. Others have parameters that you're exempt, but you have to, you have to, you have to converse with the tribal entities in your area, as an example. So it, it's, it runs the gamut. It's not always...
And that's all based on state law?
Correct. It's all based on the, yeah, the assembly bills that get passed will have different ways to deal with CEQA. Usually, they try to work in the exemption because it makes it easier. But then they'll have other caveats in there, like the consultation requirement with tribal entities.
Good. Last question I have here is Kristi Van Cleve's question around diagrams. And I wonder if you guys would want to respond to that one.
Yeah, I quite frankly thought she had a good point. I think if your goal is to not dictate style, then approaching these much more diagrammatically, removing them, I think, is, is not helping the process any. It's not helping the applicant understand.
So your advice is keep them, just simplify them? Make them more diagrammatic as diagrams?
Which honestly was where we started with, and then the response was, hey, we want to see more styles like Morro Bay, so...
Okay, so we'll hear from the commissioners.
That's for you to decide.
But that's your response. I appreciate it.
One more question that I heard.
Yeah, Asia.
I also heard a question about if a project were to come in and want to be extended, asked for a waiver and wanted to be extended, say, an additional 10 feet. I think the example was, would they fall under these guidelines? And my understanding is that, no, they would then have to go through our normal designer review process. And I wanted to clarify that with you guys.
If they were asking for a variance, then you would not qualify. Some of the legislation does allow, depending on the number of units you're providing, like the, does allow you to get concessions if it has, like, a density bonus quality, you know, component to it. So, so kind of depends.
Other questions that I might have missed?
I just had one, just one, for Kimmy. You were talking about subsidies, right? I know that's been an issue for some cities and regions to, in getting the money to help support the building of these affordable homes. Is that money available? Is that money being made available to build affordable housing?
Well, I, maybe Randy can speak to this a little better, but financing an affordable housing project tends to be a little crazy in financing. It's not uncommon for an affordable builder to have 12 different funding sources.
And the reason I am asking that is because the, part of the legislation would provide subsidy money that goes along with building these affordable homes. Is that money available? Is there money available to do this? Say, if Morro Bay were wanting to do this, is there a source of state funding?
Isn't that hard to answer? Because these developers are in competition for that money.
I'm, I'm not sure I totally understand, but if I could answer it this way, all, all development that happens in Morro Bay and basically every city is subject to an inclusionary fee. So I believe that's, is that part of the zoning code that's being considered or up for certification?
We have inclusionary housing policies that either require you to provide inclusion...
So Judy asked us about where the requirement for affordable housing comes, and I'm assuming that's the housing element?
It's set by our arena numbers.
And is there any, like, formula to that? Is that, I don't think she's here. Oh, there you are. Is there any answer amplification you can give to, to help her on how those numbers are established?
It's usually established through SlowCOG, your local council of governments. So they have a regional take on, you know, economies and markets and cost of living here. So, based on state guidance, I, I believe SlowCOG is the one that generates an estimate for how much housing we as a region need to--
Yeah, and that was what I presented at the beginning. The council did talk about the housing infrastructure plan, which the region is working for regional affordable housing, so that's where it falls off. It's right in there, so, thank you.
I think, I was on the committee at SlowCOG that devised how many houses go to which communities in the past as a county planning commissioner. And it's, it gets pretty complicated, but I'll try, and as briefly as I can, it's, it's, it looks at where people actually live right now and where jobs are right now. And it looks at the, the amount of transportation happening between where the people live and where the, and where the jobs are. And it tries to combine the needs of lower greenhouse gases in a way that puts the housing where the jobs are and the jobs where the houses are. And then that we can, can only zone in certain ways. The zones that we try to push and the numbers that are being pushed are based essentially on the number of people that live in the county and where the jobs are and how to get the, those, those people that, that work in certain price points or certain, sorry, salary points, more housing at certain levels. And so each community is given a, I don't know what the right word is. It's a total essentially of how many houses within very low, how many houses within the low, how many houses within median affordability they should be developing. And, and the zoning codes of those communities are thereby updated through the, the new ordnance, the new, uh, uh, community plans to provide for zoning for those additional units. And that can come in the form of upzoning and, and zones like R4 might go to, I mean, R3 might go to R4, or in some communities, like in San Luis Obispo, they might add more land outside of town and add more housing that way.
And if, if, if I could ask Kimmy and Randy, how many cities make those goals?
Uh, very few, yeah.
Like hardly any?
They're very hard to meet those goals. And where a lot of cities do have some success is providing in moderate income units. The extremely low and low income units are just, because they're subsidized, right?
Yeah, yeah.
They're subsidized, so you need to build other types of housing in order to pay for these subsidies. So that's where a lot of, um, communities tend to fall short. Um, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head of who actually--
I was just trying to make the point that it's rarely met.
And some communities have shortages, like water, for instance, in, in Los Alamos, some water in Cambria, therefore they aren't, aren't prescribed more housing because it's physically impossible because they don't have water. And those numbers then get jacked on to the other cities. So the other cities have to make up for it.
Yeah. We've got another question, environmental review. How does that work underneath these eligible by state law projects?
It's different by bill. A lot of them, you know, some of them are exempt. If you meet certain requirements, you're exempt from CEQA, you get a CEQA exemption. Others, you have to comply with. Others have parameters that you're exempt, but you have to, you have to, you have to converse with the tribal entities in your area, as an example. So it, it, it's, it runs the gamut. It's not always--
And that's all based on state law?
Correct. It's all based on the, yeah, the, the assembly bills that get passed. We'll have different ways to deal with CEQA. Usually they try to work in the exemption because it makes it easier. But then they'll have other caveats in there, like the, the consultation requirement with tribal entities.
Good. Last question I have here is Christie Van Cleve's question around diagrams. And wonder if you guys would want to respond to that one?
Yeah, um, I, I quite frankly thought she had a good point. I, I think if your goal is to not dictate style, then approaching these much more diagrammatically, removing them, I think is, is not helping the process any. It's not helping the applicant understand.
So your advice is keep them, just simplify them? Make them more diagrammatic as diagrams?
Which honestly was where we started with, and then the response was, hey, we want to see more styles like Morro Bay, so.
Okay, so we'll hear from the commissioners.
That's for you to decide.
But that's your response. I appreciate it. Yeah, Asia.
Uh, I also heard a question about if a project were to come in and want to be extended, asked for a waiver and want to be extended, say, an additional 10 feet. I think the example was, would they fall under these guidelines? And my understanding is that no, they would then have to go through our normal designer view process. And I wanted to clarify that with you guys.
If they were asking for a variance--
From the standards.
You would not qualify. Some of the legislation does allow, depending on the number of units you're providing, like the, uh, does allow you to get concessions if it has like a density bonus quali, you know, component to it. So, so, kind of depends.
Other questions that I might have missed?
I just had one, just one, for Kimmy. You were talking about subsidies, right? I know that's been an issue for some cities and regions to, in getting the money to help support the building of these affordable homes. Is that money available? Is that money being made available to build affordable housing?
Well, I, um, maybe Randy can speak to this a little better, but financing an affordable housing project tends to be a little crazy in financing. It's not uncommon for an affordable builder to have 12 different funding sources.
And the reason I am asking that is because the, part of the legislation would provide subsidy money that goes along with building these affordable homes. Is that money available? Is there money available to do this? Say, if Morro Bay were wanting to do this, is there a source of state funding?
Isn't that hard to answer? Because these developers are in competition for that money.
I'm, I'm not sure I totally understand, but if I could answer it this way, all, all development that happens in Morro Bay and basically every city is subject to an inclusionary fee. So I believe that's, is that part of the zoning code that's being considered or up for certification?
We have inclusionary housing policies that either require you to provide inclusionary units if you're a regular developer, or you can pay in Lufes. That's subject to the decision of the city, not subject to the decision of the developer. When you're getting into, you know, affordable housing projects, like the, the one over here by Haslow, it's on Tascadaro Road, those projects only make it through in the, in the manner that, that Kimmy was talking about. You have multiple funding sources, and you need multiple funding sources to ratchet up the ladder in your competition for tax credits, because they only get built with tax credits, almost.
Well, let me ask this question. These projects made eligible by state law, is there any special money for them?
There is legislation pending that talks about providing, you know--
Special financing.
Yes, correct.
And, but that's not, not in place yet, right?
Pending legislation.
And I did miss one more. Betty asked about how, when you layer guidelines on, which are trying to get better-looking buildings, better-massed buildings, better context buildings, how does that impact the affordability? And how do you, you know, maybe this is for Randy and Kimmy, how do you balance that?
That's an interesting question, because previously there was a discussion, or maybe perhaps a letter, that talked about the choice of materials and how those might impact cost. And, and to be clear, most of these projects that we're talking about here are, are things like tax credit funded, multiple, you know, places like Haslow, that their, their program is providing affordable housing. And one of the, their things is, they've done the analysis that quality materials are less expensive because they're looking at longevity of a, of a project. To provide the opportunity for a lesser product out there is not, doesn't do anyone any good. It doesn't do the, the community, the end user, or the, the manager of it. So in the many jurisdictions that, that I've worked or have been on an ARC or on a planning commission, that concept I've never experienced with an affordable housing builder. They're, they'll certainly say, hey, you're insane that you want us to add whatever this extra thing is on here. But as a general statement, they're not looking to build the cheapest-to-build product out there. That's not what the goal is. So I do not feel that these are over and above. They're not outside of anything you've already done within your design guidelines. So they're not increasing cost to, to anything.
Randy, thanks. The last thing I wanted to run through is we have summations of Commissioner Myers' stuff and Commissioner Ingraffia's questions, Mr. Rodriguez and mine around form-based zoning. Asia, did you have any points you were going to make to add?
I had written in, and they'd addressed them as well.
So we're preparing to see if we've got a motion even close to being in place. So what I'd like to do is run through these points. Are they related to your points, or are they broader? So how about if I go through these points, and then you guys, when we're talking about your points, you can say if that's adequate to cover what you were interested in? So let me run through the summations on Eric's stuff. Provide a better introduction to the ODS, why they are necessary, by what agency and for what end goal. The way I read this, and Eric can explain it, is we're looking for not like a high-level explanation, but a low level, why this is ministerial, why it's state law, that it only applies to that. I think it's so that, you know, our, our community can understand what, what we're looking at, not in the abstract, but in the application. And so we would be looking for a further explanation in the introduction. Eric, am I close?
You guys have, I think you're getting where I'm going with this. We've already talked about it a couple of times, but the, the public has been, it's a hard thing to wrap your head around, so I'm just trying to make this as brutally over-described as possible, just so everybody can see it from three or four different, you want to look at it horizontally and vertically. You know, you don't just want a single dimension. And then I think that the bills themselves, while they were described, I'm, I'm digging for that page, on the first page, in your intro, under applicability, it describes Senate Bill 35. But in all honesty, at this point in time, Senate Bill 35 doesn't actually apply in the coastal zone. So that shouldn't be described the way it is, and you should, we should discuss that. And then the same thing with Senate Bill 6. At the bottom, Senate Bill 6 doesn't apply either at this point in time in Morro Bay, except for the lots, like seven or eight lots on one street.
Okay, so let's see if we've got, is, is this making sense? If we want to, because we want, I want to get through all these points in the next half hour. Yeah.
This isn't going to be quick. It has to be thorough.
Well, if we, if we don't take it somewhere, we're never going to get anywhere. So we can find a more deep review process? Let's start it?
Essentially, SB 30 describes, has a goal, and the goal of SB 30 is to vest entitlements more quickly, right? That's what the goal of SB 30 is. And there's, each of these bills has a specific audience and a specific goal. And if you talk about SB 330, that's its goal. SB 211, 2011, is more on, it only applies to office retailer parking zone. It doesn't apply to residential zones. We should describe that. AB 2162, you did pretty well describe. It's specifically around supportive housing. And then the same thing with this SB 423 that may be coming. We should describe what that is and how it relates to SB 35, just because I think people really want to understand, and they don't now.
So we can get into this more depth?
That's all--
Randy, what do you think?
Yes, I think, well, I think we started the meeting by getting into, let's make it very straightforward, the what and the why here, and I think that's what you're, I'm hearing from you.
I think so, yeah.
And then, and the second point is, and I, I totally agree, flush these out a little more. I don't, I don't think it does anyone any good to have the full text of the, of the bill in there, but perhaps a little more applicability to your city.
And everybody here is starting to understand this, but this is going to go to council? And we really want that, this not to happen again, right? So I think we need to deliver that explanation. So I really like Eric's point.
I think both.
It makes sense for you guys, okay.
Yes.
Next Eric point is, this is applicable, and this is the point that the commission made last time, only to projects made eligible by state law. 100% clear, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm asking them.
I, I, I think we, yes, in our presentation indicated that we, we heard that.
Okay, so I'm building a motion, right? So that's part of it.
I understand.
Three, Eric, you asked about, are these terms defined in the zoning code? Scott, is that an issue?
Did you guys go back and look?
Terms used in the ODS, are they defined?
For instance, by design, for instance, you know, farm worker, for instance, emergency, for instance, the, you know, all these, there's a lot of words that people would call wonky planner words.
Some of, some of those ones, I think, are defined by the state. We could, so, we, you can take different approaches to it. You can just copy paste the definition from the state. The problem with that is, as soon as the state expands or contracts or changes the definition, then yours--
So, so be real specific. What would we, would we add stuff to the zoning code, Scott?
I mean, we, we have definitions for some of the things that are in there. The other stuff, you know, that's going to be called out in the legislation is going to be defined at the state level, which I think what Kimmy was getting at. And, and that's where I was talking about, like, the, the major transit stop. Like, you have to go through the whole definition process.
To understand what that is, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and it's, and it really is, it's less about what it, you know, some of this stuff means in, in our code, and maybe more about what it means there, I suppose, in the legislation.
Okay, are you satisfied?
It just made more sense to reference back to the state, I think, on those.
Got it.
I just want to point to somewhere.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure I get this one 100%. Eric, wanted to consider a menu of objective options?
Where are you? I'm not--
I'm on your point five and your summation in the staff report. Your points are all summarized on page one of the staff report?
So the staff report has taken nine pages. I'm looking at the nine pages.
Yeah, well, we're not going to go through nine pages, right? So, or we are, or we are?
What's the point of, what's the point of taking the time to do them if we're not going to go through them?
That's a good question. We're trying to see if we can get a motion, and if not, we can take, do you want to go back? And we can do it point by point?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I was-- I didn't get any points from, at this level of detail from anyone. And, and I think that the city deserves this level of detail. I don't think we should, this is big. This may only be applied to a few projects, but as far as I can read the public--
So let me try this in a different way, if you will. Hang with me for a second. Kimmy, can you guys look at his points? Do we have to discuss them? Can we say you will? How, how can you give us a way, rather than going point by point on nine pages tonight? Is there a way to include them?
Well, I, I don't personally mind going point by point. I, I think it's great to get to that level of detail. But the point I think Scott was trying to make was that every, the commission needed to be able to vote on each of those points, and some of them you may have agreements, some of them you might not.
Yeah, I specifically asked the commission to discuss many of the points, not, not intending to demand my way. I wanted to bring it up.
We're, we're trying to figure it out. Okay, so let's put a pause on that and see if we have to go through the nine pages. What else did you ask?
It might be faster if I went through it, because I, I know which ones don't apply anymore, having further read all the assembly bills, and, and I know which ones I have more conviction on.
Okay, let's get through all of this first, and then we can turn it over to you at that point. A menu of objective options, do we know what that means? It says here, this is a summation, I think, from Nancy. Wanted to consider a menu of, menu of objective options for projects providing very low-income units that would provide them with some option to reduce costs for the project. It sounds like cheaper stoves, I don't know.
No, that, that was, that was leftover from the, and maybe it's in the nine pages, but it wa, it was the Joe's comment about having a menu of options for extremely affordable projects that could choose to maybe defer, not do, or do things differently. And as I've heard tonight, it doesn't sound like that has any court anymore.
Okay.
That was Joe.
Okay, that was Joe's point? All right. Last one under yours in the summation is the issue on diagrams. And do you want to talk to that, Eric? We've got Christie's comment on it. How do you take that?
I like Christie's comment, because I think if we show something, people follow-- I, I've seen it in the past, and I've seen actually applicants come in and go, well, this is what you showed us to do, and here it is.
That's good for me, that you like it, and that's good.
So I, I, or simplifying the drawings down to, you know, the stick figure type of drawing. It just keeps, it, it's, it's either--
So is this helpful to you guys?
Yeah, it's helpful. We create both types of diagrams all the time in different zoning codes. And the question for you is, like, more detail might get you too prescriptive, as Commissioner Myers is saying. Too little detail, where we're just laying out dimensions and we're just, you know, showing a box, basically. And it can, on the other hand, like applicants can come in with a cereal box and be like, is this good? So that's a bit of a judgment call for you guys, I think. But we can, we can execute either.
Well, I think this is sort of the Socratic method, Randy. So let's, let's, let's change the diagrams yet again. Thank you, Christie.
What we're really hoping for is consensus amongst the five of you.
Okay, let's see, are we shaking our heads about?
I, I, I could go either way. I can either go to greater detail or no detail.
I vote no detail. Can you put the slides on the screen? Is that hard, the diagrams?
I think to, to, Betty spoke and, and mentioned a few houses in this town, which I also agree are the most affordable housing in the town, and they are not anything like those drawings. And yet they are cute little Morro Bay-esque bungalow courts in this sort of board and bat, scrappy, you know, post and pier foundations. And, and that's not represented here, so I'm, I think, the fear is we'll lose that kind of typology if we don't show it.
So let me try to offer a summation. Being on planning commissions and to, to the public, quite often you'll show a diagram, and a developer will copy that diagram. And that's what you'll get for the architecture. When that's not what's intended by the diagram, but that's what happens. So sometimes by making simpler, more abstract diagrams, then they have to at least consider context and materials. And it has to be a bit of a, of a, of an essay in architecture. So that's why I lean in that direction, is to not overly define it or we get a town that looks like those two drawings.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I agree, no diagrams are better than those diagrams.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, we're, we're shaking.
So how do you feel about that? Are we, we understand what they're asking?
We're simplifying the diagrams and removing style-specific components.
Kind of like the fenestration and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
As nice as they are, yeah.
But that doesn't--
Yeah, Joe?
For, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
For instance, we're not, cereal boxes is a scary description, because I still think that things like eaves and porches and decks and whatever these other components are still going to exist. We're not going to indicate whether they're exposed rafter tails or deep faces or shallow-- but there's communicating massing, which is part of the goal here, it would, I think, is appropriate.
I mean, that sounds good to me. Others?
It's, I can go either way. It's a really subjective discussion. It's really hard to, to, to vote on one or the other.
My, my question, I guess, relates to that. I, I was thankful to the office because they presented me with leads to five cities similarly situated to, to Morro Bay, and I was able to look at their objective design guidelines. And it was good, but it was also not so good because it would have required a really extensive spreadsheet categorizing all the elements and then the sub-elements, and then trying to figure out what was missing from one and included in the other, and, and then compare that to Morro Bay. So it put me in a, in a large muddle. But I was left with the impression that our proposed objective design guidelines have fewer, fewer required elements or sub-elements. And I was, admittedly, it's only an impression, and I don't know how accurate that impression is even. But I, I, I wanted to ask you how you, how you arrived at that mix as opposed to, for any given architectural element requiring, say, one or two choices as opposed to three or four choices? Obviously, you didn't want to overburden an applicant. But how do you decide what's, how did you decide what's an overburdening requirement and what is justifiable or required? I'm sorry, I wish I could do a better job at asking my question.
Your existing design guidelines are the foundation for all this work. If you spoke to it there and was, and it appeared to us to be subjective, we spoke to it and, and tried to quantify it in an objective manner.
Okay, that's a very good answer. So to make the, the guidelines, if you will, more objective, more elements, more required elements, does not necessarily have to be seen as overburdening the applicant, but rather trying to get, if you will, a little bit more objective than this, to, to making our approach a little more objective than our current subjective guidelines.
Yes, presumably, when you sit down and deliberate, you come to a conclusion of what is correct in a particular application. And you could establish a list of why that is, I would hope. It's not just what you felt like when you walked in the door that day. And you, so there, there is a consistency, ideally, that, that comes with your, this community's values on design. And those, that consistency, those values are what we try to turn into a description that someone can design a building to without going into the, the mystery of what people really have an opinion on.
Well, the, the reason I asked the question and, and liked the answer is because I'm, I'm left with this suggestion that if we put, for lack of a better way of saying it, more design elements into our-- more design elements into our guidelines, one, we perhaps have a better chance of producing something that we like. It might also produce some sort of incentive to negotiate if the applicant thinks that some things are unnecessary. And again, it might, well, those, those two, those two reasons. I, I'm, I'm not convinced that less is better in this situation, particularly because this is the first time that we've been trying this. We, with more elements, we would have the option to later on prune some of the elements if we found them to be unnecessary or counter, you know, counter-purpose.
Okay. I'm trying to think how we get past this. So I, I buy what you said. I do. I think it makes sense. What we need to see if, if we can find some direction here. Do you think you're suggesting that you like the complexity of these diagrams?
No, not, not at all, no.
Okay.
I'm, what I'm suggesting is the, the, the resort to English.
Rather than the diagrams?
Yes, this has, this has nothing to do with the diagrams.
The diagrams start to point to sort of an epistemological dilemma, where you, you try to decide whether Morro Bay is a single-story, board-and-bat house with no front porch on, you know, or whether it's a, a two-story condo with hardy plank. And, and, and which is affordable. And that, that argument I want to kind of toss out.
Yeah.
That's why I want to get rid of the diagrams. I just want, that's something we can talk about, but it starts to get really spiritual and, and intellectual and, and it, hard, hard to agree on and hard even for me to wrap my own head around. And so I just want to.
So let me suggest, because I think you reckon sense. It's 8:12 right now. I would love to bring this meeting to a close around 8:30. And let's do our best to see how we go from here. I think there's going to be points that we're not going to be able to cover tonight. And I think, think about how you would respond. Maybe we go back, like, for example, I'll give you one. My example is, I'm very interested in seeing if form-based zoning can apply to this. So I'm gonna, after tonight, I'm gonna write out some suggestions. We're gonna try them out on, on Kimmy and Randy. If we do that, do we need another meeting then to resolve all that? We do.
Yeah.
So let's do that with that in mind, and see if we can wrap it up in 20 minutes here. And then your homework will be to, after all these discussions, pick the points you want to keep. Joe's the same?
We, we need to, we need to hash those points out tonight, so they can go away with the, with the.
No, I'm saying we don't. I'm saying that we, we, we put it together, and this is going to go another round.
What is, what is the mechanism whereby we get to read our reports?
The next meeting, we come in with a concise list, not nine pages, a concise list of points. I'll make my point about form-based zoning. We'll discuss it and say yes or no.
They'll require a meeting after that to see the draft. That would require two more.
Well, we can, once the, the thing is made, we can review it without a meeting, I think.
But we're at now, I don't think that's a possibility.
Scott, is it, is it, is it possible, in my example, I write something, can that be given to the other commissioners?
It cannot.
So we have to do it through a meeting?
Yep.
I think it's worth another meeting, and then we do it. I mean, there's enough concern here, and I want to hear your, your nine page.
Well, I think that's what we were asked to do a month and a half ago. And that's why I wrote this a month and a half ago, and that's why Joe wrote his a month and a half ago. And now, now we're hearing from, from yourself that you'd like to do it now. And so we're all going to wait another.
No, I don't.
Didn't do it.
I don't like to do it now. I'm seeing if we can do it now. So instead, or do we need to move it to another meeting? Which, you're right, that takes.
I'd like to proceed with what we have now. And then if you, if you need to do it again, then we'll do it again also. But I don't see the need to blow it off now.
Okay, so you want to go through nine pages?
That's why we're here.
Okay. Other commissioners? Asia's gonna have to leave.
And can I chime? Can I chime in?
Yeah, please.
I think one of the things that, at least the council has appreciated in the past, you know, we have a couple of council members here, is the fact that
Yeah.
we have over 30 years of planning experience here. We're used to doing this kind of stuff. We go through this, we get it. I don't want to give my council anything that they don't understand. Because that's what we would be doing, is giving them something that's incomplete. I haven't even seen my, my input, and they haven't built it, they haven't put it together. They're in the process of doing that. We've got to see that before that ever goes to the next level. So I think we are going to have to have another meeting. So I'll just get to that point. We're gonna have to have another meeting.
Okay, so now tell me how we do that.
How do we do what? Set a, schedule another meeting?
I'm suggesting that what we do is we all go back, and based after this meeting, we do, we update our lists and our comments.
Okay.
And make them specific parts of a motion. And we then review them together at the next meeting, which would get us to the point where I think we could make a motion.
And my, my reaction is that if we were to go through those comments that exist now, then we won't have to also do them next time, as well as all the new ones. Because all, all you're doing is essentially adding your comments on top of my comments and making next meeting twice as long as this meeting.
I, I don't think so, but we can, Asia has to leave, so we're gonna lose her. We still have a quorum, so we can still take it through. Let's, I guess, you know, if, if commissioners, if you want to stay late, we can do that. And we can, we can give you the floor, and you can do your best. And we'll see how long that takes. My question is, Joe, I've gone through your comments that have been summarized here. Most of those I see answers to. You talk about, you do an appreciation of what the objective design standards are. That was very supportive. Concerns of poorly designed projects, is that still, that's more of a question than it is a, a comment?
Yeah, my major, my major concern here, or
Yeah.
my major interest is, I, I think in what I just expressed, which was this business about less being better, is, is not the approach that I would care to take on this. You know, and I've spent the better part of the page explaining that in some detail.
Okay.
And maybe I, maybe if I, what I'm discouraged is that we will write our documents, and then in the course of a meeting, we're going to have to read the other people's documents, absorb it, analyze it.
Well, no, you'll get them in advance. And what I'm asking us all to do is to write them as part of a motion.
Well, how will we get them in advance?
I can share information from the commissioners that you, with, with, you just can't share it back and forth, is the point. Right. So I think, we can, we can put together the letters. Although, one of the things we were thinking about doing for the meeting is actually putting it all in, what Kimmy had referred to before as a, a radish sheet. And there could be a, you know, a pretty, what'd you say, lightning round? Thumbs up, thumbs down. And then maybe there's ones that we need to talk about a little more, because there's, you know, misunderstanding or lack of understanding among certain commissioners on what they mean. And maybe that facilitates the, the process a little bit, having it, having it that way versus the way we're doing it now?
Yeah, I'm certainly open to suggestions.
And, and we'll publish that sheet, like, with the agenda, so you all have a chance to see it.
Okay.
I'm not familiar with the.
So you, you saw something very similar to this when we updated, when we did the general plan update, and we did the zoning code update. We did it for public comment, right? So there was, we did it for everybody's com, we did it for the planning commissioners' comment, for all the public comments we said, and then like, how we addressed the document, whether we did or didn't. It's kind of like that, just a little more simple, just for you, what you guys are.
And, and in addition to that, we would also have our own documents, which we composed, published?
You can certainly do that. The idea would be taking your exact language and putting it in there. No summary, just what you said, put it in there. And we can do that for the next meeting.
I, I would simply, I would simply ask that what I, what I write be read by the other commissioners. And I have a feeling that, that Eric feels the same way, that.
Yeah, because in some, when you summarize, like, my comments of this were summarized in five points this long. And it's, it can't possibly summarize what you're trying to describe.
But ultimately, we have to make a motion, right? So we have to get your points into a motion.
Yes, but, but there's, there's something to be, to be said for the power of persuasion and what you choose to say, and how you choose to say it, and what order, and what you choose to say it in. And I think you sometimes lose something when you're forced to summarize a page in the five lines.
Well, commissioners, I'm open to a suggestion. How would you like to go from here?
I, well, I'll say what I said before, which is this, my idea, my idea is, I'll, I'll rewrite this, put on, put it on paper and published in some fashion, so that the other commissioners can read it.
Or would you rather do what Kimmy is suggesting?
I would opt for what I just suggested.
Okay. Asia?
Yes.
Mike, do you have a point?
Yeah, I can do what Joe's suggesting. And I would ask that if Kimmy and, why am I forgetting your name? Randy, if we would have an update of the latest, you know, our comments. Because, you know, we have to build off of that, right? We can't remember everything. So are we gonna have a revise? So I can do what Joe suggests, but I want a revise. I want to know what you're gonna put all into whatever we're gonna send to council. Because I want to make sure it's good. Because if I don't see that, somebody said we can't do it anyway unless we've reviewed it. Somebody said that, I don't know if it's true or not, but I, I, I agree with that. We shouldn't send anything to council we haven't reviewed.
What is being suggested is that it would be two more meetings?
No, I'm not suggesting it, I'm just saying, I can do that Joe's, what he's suggesting, but I need to get that revise for review to add whatever Joe wants to add.
I have a specific comment related to two more meetings. I would really like us to finish at the next meeting. I, I mentioned this before, and I'm gonna mention it again, we're running out of time. One of our grants ends in September. The other one, I think, continues up to November. But would prefer to have our consultants, RRM, around when we get to go to council, so they have the benefit of their expertise when they have questions. Without that, I don't have the money to pay them. So would like this to be moved forward expeditiously from here. Given the next meeting would be our fourth meeting on this.
Can the consultants make these adjustments for us that we, we've all agreed on to this point?
What have you agreed on to this point?
Same question.
And by, and by when? When can you make them available?
Okay.
Because we're gonna have another, another meeting, at least one more meeting. So I'd like to, Asia's gonna leave soon, but I want Asia here too during that meeting. So when she breaks, I'd like to break tonight. So, because what we do together is bodies should be, you know, done together, that we can move it up.
There's a conflict. I mean, essentially, we've been talking about process now for.
So we have a couple of things, four items, that we feel that you've agreed on.
Change the applicability of the projects, and the wording can change. But for the ODS review, only to apply to projects that meet the specific criteria under the effective state legislation. Provide planning commission with the option to do the review of ODS qualifying projects. Clarify that some of the terms are defined in state documents. Simplify diagrams to illustrate requirements. Although, since I wrote that down, you've eliminated the diagrams. And that's it.
No, that's not it, the introductions.
Yes.
I don't, okay, so you, that's some of Eric's comments, which I thought would be coming in the next round.
No, we went through your summations, and we were trying to get as many of those points. Eric and, and Joe, rightly so, want to go through their points in more detail. And we want to do that with Asia.
Yes.
So that's going to take another meeting. And I would love to, I don't know how you guys feel, but if there, you could take a new look and sort of put your points into motions. That helps me a lot in a way to expedite this.
And get them on the next agenda.
And then we could, we could get that done at the next meeting.
And I mean, publish as much points as possible on, by the clarity agenda.
If we can get them as motion, motions, that simplifies it down to a discussion point.
And when would that meeting be? In other words, are you gonna be ready in two weeks? Because our next meeting is scheduled for August 1st.
I don't think it can be that soon. Scott, how soon can we get that all done?
Our next meeting is August 1st.
Yep.
Just had it.
Yep.
So we would need, you know, we would need your comments pretty quick, like, in the next few days to make that happen.
So just to, you know, I spent probably 48 hours, all told, so far. And you're asking me to, to rewrite everything again. And I don't feel that that is appropriate. I think I've already written it. And I think Joe's kind of already written it. And just to rephrase it, because you guys want to catch up, is the way I feel about it. And I'm, I'm, this is, this is disconcerting to me. I think we should be, rather than talking about this time, about how this should all be going on, we should be actually just doing it. Because we, I'd be about half done by now.
This is difficult, because I'm, I'm not sure that what I would write next would in any way improve the situation. I mean, I, if, if I.
Okay. Well, I don't want to force anybody to do it. I'm trying to find how we get, get it done in one meeting.
So I'm, I'm considering, I'm considering eliminating the, the one concern I have. If I, I probably need the advice of the commission here. If I, if I have a concern that this, the proposed objective design guidelines should be larger and more specific with more requirements, very specific requirements, you know, I, I don't have an architectural background that can decide it should be four of these, what, what the four choices should be, and that we should have three or two. I really, I'm not qualified to make that.
Let me try again. What if, if you guys want to stay, Eric promises he can get through his in 20 minutes? Let's go ahead and do it. Let's do it tonight. We'll, we'll say goodnight to Asia, but we'll have it ready for her for the next meeting, when we all get to discuss it and approve it. I'm willing to stay here. You've promised us 20 minutes.
You promised us 20, I didn't promise anything.
No, no, you just said you would have been done with your.
I said I'd be done with half of it.
Half of it.
And that's 40 minutes ago.
Oh, so we're asking for 40 minutes?
Yes, he would have been done with half of it. And the other thing is, when can Kimmy and Randy be ready for, you know, for the rewrite or the update, the redraft? You know, are you guys gonna meet our schedule as well?
We can go as fast as you want to go fast.
Okay.
Can you guys stay another half hour and see how far we get?
If that would lead to more items of consensus, that would be really helpful for us. But I don't want to keep anyone past.
Yeah. Randy, you good? Nancy? Scott?
And when's the date?
Joe?
I want to make sure about the date. When, when can, when are we gonna have this meeting? Because I gotta make sure I can make that meeting, because it's not gonna be in two weeks. Because he can't do more work. He's already worked two days straight. And I can't give you my input in two days.
I thought Commissioner Meyer prepared these a couple of weeks ago.
Right.
Oh.
I did, six weeks ago.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
That's what I thought, yeah, so.
And I don't, I don't.
We were requested to have it done.
Because you said you would need our input by the end of the week.
Be, I'd like by the end of the weekend, so we can get it over to, to RRM. And we can get it, because we, we publish on Thursdays, right?
Yeah.
So you could have it through the weekend, and then they could have four days with those comments.
Okay, now I'm, now I'm getting a little concerned about your, your timeframe here.
Okay.
What I've heard was that the commission wants to see what is at least close to the final language, so that they can say, okay, with these amendments, we're gonna make recommendation. That, that's where you'd really like to be at before you let go of it. Which means, for us to write that language, we need to get all of the community, all of the information and consensus on, hey, this is really the general direction we're going. And we have to have it with enough time to actually write that. In four days is not enough time for us to take all those ideas and restructure this document.
Yeah, so we're probably looking at the 15th.
I, I do believe Scott indicated that he, he could communicate directly with each of you. And I, I don't, perhaps using Scott and, and him providing us the specific direction for what the draft resolution or draft language looks like might get us there in one more meeting. But it would sort of require, I think, staff to filter a little bit. And I don't know how you're comfortable there.
Yeah, and I think we're probably looking at the, the meeting on the August 15th. Because we don't, we also don't have any items on that agenda. Because we don't, we also don't have any items on that agenda, so we could just get through it.
Yes. So August fifteenth. Is that the date? August fifteenth? Because I gotta put it in now.
I, I mean, I agree with what Randy was saying when I was thinking about-
Because I gotta move two other meetings I have that day. So I gotta make sure I'm gonna, if it's gonna happen, I'll, because that's not a regular meet, well, it is our regular.
No, that's the second, that's the second meeting in August.
Sorry, I'm just, a lot of work.
So let's, let's launch into it and see. It's eight-thirty. Let's see if, what we can get done by nine o'clock. And please feel free to stay. And Joe, do you want to start?
I fear I'm just, I'm sure I'm just being redundant. I'm gonna read, I'm gonna read this. This, this probably expresses my thoughts better than I can extemporaneously, so go ahead. Okay, so, and bear with me in the audience, I'm sorry for doing this, but I, understandable concerns could lead to a drafting approach that I would characterize as less is better. I believe we should reject this conservative approach. It's beyond dispute that the objective guidelines will produce a very serious consequence. They will produce a virtual automatic result devoid of any review judgment. As with any automatic response, things can go wrong, can go wrong. I would hope the guidelines would take a more cautionary approach, mindful of how options and selections, when glowingly described on paper, can be disappointing and inadequate when they materialize on the construction site. My experience over the years on the Planning Commission is that projects are rarely criticized for having too much detail or that the details are in conflict. Very common is the complaint that the details offered are insufficient. Requiring, requiring more details rather than less will mitigate unintended gaming of design details, visual disappointment, and the community damage from the project, which there will be no effective appeal. Additionally, there will always exist an option later when we learn more about objective guidelines to prune details from the guidelines that prove ineffective or unnecessary. Let's see. It seems obvious, but critical truth that we must live with exterior design, good or bad, expensive or affordable, as a community for seventy-five or a hundred years. To the suggestion that a comprehensive list of design details would be too burdensome for the cause of affordable housing, I repeat, or what I've said several times, that in the assessment of a project's affordability, square footage, interior components, interior amenities, and the entitlement process are far more significant than the cost of one or two additional exterior detail requirements. Lastly, and ironically, a more comprehensive list of details automatically assigned to a project might also bolster the role of the Planning Commission. If the developer truly found numerous design details as warring with each other or simply too burdensome, he could offer a conceptual presentation to the Planning Commission, assessing the list of details in the context of the entire project, or assessing the details in the context of the project's financial constraints. The commission might agree that some of the required details should be eliminated for best effect. Such an approach would not be available at the administrative level where all the objective design requirements are explicit and must be satisfied. That's my thought. Now, I don't know how you, I, I don't know in detail how to accomplish that, but that's my, my suspicion is that we should try to accomplish that. And I know that's, it's fairly a named way to put it, but.
I think the only way I know how to kind of go about that is to look at the individual points and to actually make recommendations to the consultants. You either do this or you do that. So when we were trying to build a motion, we have to get it to that point. So we have to apply your logic to what's in the, in the guidelines. And at the same time, I think, respect the fact that they're objective design guidelines, right, or standards. Not, not just, you know, everything we kind of want. So the balance is probably yes, more, but when do we lose the objectivity?
Well, you, you don't, you don't lose the objectivity because all the things that you would, would add presumably would be objective. But I, I for one readily admit that I don't have the knowledge or background to say-
Let's ask our consultants. How would you respond?
Mike?
Apologies. I want to build in infinite flexibility into an objective standard. I, I don't think that's-
No, that's a mischaracterization.
I, I know that's probably an extreme statement there, that is not truly where you're, where you were at, but that, I'm not sure how we get there. That's a very complex thing you're asking for.
I think I would back out of it a little bit and say, you, you read several other objective design standard ordinances, and you came to the conclusion that you did in your statements. It has to be based on something. And we, over here, all of the same mind, we're not really sure what that looks like. And so if there are things in those other ordinances that you would, that you think that we, we should include, because it seems more, more, is what you were asking for, then please point that out to us and we're happy to, 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 to take your lead there. I just, we can give you more of things you don't want. And I'm sorry, I, I mean, I don't, and I don't want to do that. And I think that would just prove frustrating for the entirety of the commission. But if you can, if there are things there that you thought, wow, we should have some of those and some of those, then we can have a conversation.
I think, I think the prob-
Look, so here's how I resolve my dilemma. You know, I, I should have gone to arct, I should have gone and got a, a master or a PhD in architecture because I'm, I'm not-
It's never too late.
I'm not, I'm not qualified to decide what I'm asking somebody to decide upon. So I, I will withdraw that request because I can't make it and, and it would require that essentially the, the consultants might start all over again. Or, as I suggested earlier, you probably did it in the beginning with this enormous spreadsheet and you started looking at all these jurisdictions and writing down what they did and didn't do and-
What I, what I heard earlier in the, in the meeting was a concern at some way to evaluate the work you've done is, in this, be able to make modifications. And I, I think perhaps some of you, because we're not gonna see fifteen of these this year. So building in or maybe separate from this, building a mechanism of look back at what, what we've done, and you've talked about it a couple of different ways, might provide you with that comfort that, that all right, we can evaluate these steps we're at and build these things incrementally to see what comes out of them. I would suggest that perhaps there, you may get a building that you don't consider perfect in the process, but you're not gonna get fifteen of them. And that might provide you a way forward because we really don't know some of these answers, honestly.
Joe, what do you think as we go through Eric's points? You can sort of apply and we can, we can all weigh in in what you're looking for? And let's see how those, I'm looking for like specific points from Eric that we can put into the motion. So Eric, let's go.
I think, Joe, just to clarify, I think, rather than saying design elements, I think what you're looking for is specificity around certain descriptions of a building. What makes humans happy in a space isn't an element per se, but it's the way that element is described. It's through the porch. If you want a porch in the front of the house, you say you want a porch, and the architect draws a porch. The porch could be nine thousand, there are some porches suck and some porches are awesome. And so what you need to do as an architect is describe the awesome porch. But then in this particular situation, the awesome porch costs too much, makes the house too expensive. So you have to scale back from the too expensive porch to what's the bare minimum porch that you can accept. And that's what I hope to try to discuss.
Well, why don't you take us through, Eric?
Page one, we've already pretty much discussed. There's not much else on there that I need to rehash. And so the next page, starting with site design, parking should not-
Under page two, you do have this no design review, which is a comment in there.
We've already discussed that, didn't we?
Yeah, but they, they have to change that specifically, right?
I thought we already covered that.
Well, we, we said it, but there is a, a part of the report that says no design review. Is that different than coming to, that is different than coming to us?
Yeah, you're, we're, we're gonna come to you for the review of the ODS. That's, you're gonna do that review. We're gonna have language in there, though, that gives you the option. We'll probably come ahead of time to show, or let you do a couple of them, and it may turn out that some you don't want to do.
So the language in there that says no design review stays, or that comes out?
I think that's talking about the section of the new zoning code that has a design review.
Yeah, right, it is.
Not apply to ODS projects.
Right, okay, so it stays in the ODS.
Essentially, what it should say is-
Yeah, there is no design review process. Instead, you're going through the ODS project.
It says it in the bottom of the page. Housing developments eligible under SB thirty-five, three thirty, two eleven, two sixty, twenty-one sixty-two, complying with the objective standards in this chapter shall not be subject-
Got it.
-provisions of chapter, blah, blah, blah. That's what it should say. Do I, do we have agreement?
We do.
Okay. We've already, the, the top of this next page, we've already discussed. Projects not covered by the various new laws should still be required to go through the normal design review process. They're not, they're not, they're not gonna be going through ODS. Is that, do we, we have agreed on that, correct? So the next one is seventeen thirty-one oh two oh site design. And this, this comment applies to both chapter seventeen point two seven, but specifically to seventeen thirty-one oh two oh. Parking should not be located between the primary building frontage and the street. And this, the way this is written, it doesn't specifically exclude, I think parking should be specifically excluded from being between the main building and the street. It should be in some other location. So that's, that's an objective design standard. Do we have any agreement or disagreement there?
Consultants? Randy?
Do I agree with that direction? Yes.
Okay.
Then I, additionally, the next little point is really easy. The, the federal government has been mandating electric vehicles at some great length. And in our local moral bay code, there's no discussion about mandating any more than a level one charging. And I believe that level one charging is essentially a one-ten plug, which does nothing except maybe charge a bicycle or skateboard. If you want to charge a car, it's gotta be level two or greater. If you want to have objective design standards for this type of housing, the residents in this type of housing should be also given the opportunity to have an electric car. Since it's been mandated on them by the federal government, the, the state government mandate doesn't talk about it, but I think we should include it in our objective design standards. That's, I would, I would say that there should be electrical level two charging within these. The next, do we have an agreement there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's an item that is spoken to within other parts of the California Building Code that you may not want to reach into for that. And most multifamily and commercial projects built these days have to provide a certain level of charging that is not just level one charging, so.
So are you saying that I'm in conflict with that, with this comment? Or am I, are we in agreement with that?
You could be.
Yeah, you could be in conflict with other state laws.
So we don't need to, we don't need to say it because they're already saying it. That's what you're saying.
That's, that's what I'm saying. And we'd be happy to report back to what degree they're stating that, so that you can see if that-
If that is the case, I'll look that up just to verify, but if it's the case, I agree and we'll move on. So this next one is on page three, seventeen thirty-one oh two oh site design, number two, number of access points. I believe there needs to be another letter here, item D, which discusses gates to parking areas. Because I've noticed in some of the condo projects around town that the electric gates, the people pulling in the electric gate are blocking the sidewalk. And the majority of these, while they're trying to fuss with their code, or it's the work van, or it's the utility company blocking the sidewalk because the gate is right there at the sidewalk. I think there should be a, I said twenty-five, but it's an arbitrary number, foot distance between the gate and the back of the sidewalk so that the car entering the project is not blocking the sidewalk. Because most of these projects are within an urban core, they're within a commercial district, they shouldn't be blocking commercial sidewalk. That's my inner point. You can disagree if you're not, you can say ten feet, but I don't know if ten feet's enough. Does the city code have a description there? I don't think it does.
I'm not sure.
I haven't found it, that's why I ask. I think that that should be an objective design standard for projects with gates.
So do we know what we're proposing specifically?
That twenty-five foot height distance between the, the gate and the sidewalk, or a twenty foot, if that's a better number, or a fifteen foot, if that's a better number. I know we're kind of making sausage here, but that's what this is all about.
I don't really have an opinion. I don't even know how to go about that.
Okay, then we don't have an agreement, we'll let that one go. I don't want to turn it into a mountain we have to climb. Again, this is-
It sounds like a good idea, but that's the only opinion I have. It might not be.
Randy, Kimmy, opinions?
That is not an uncommon thing. I've seen it before. It's certainly effective. If you look back to garage setbacks from street, that's a great reference because that is the space a car wants to, they reserve for a car to park in there. So is that twenty in your city? Then that might be a good reference point to establish that.
It would make sense, it would tie back into the balance of the policy in the city, so then let's convert-
So that's included?
Let's use twenty to, to an operable gate in a multifamily. Then the next one is also seventeen thirty-one oh two oh site design on page four. Item C three B refers to evergreen trees at least ten feet high, doesn't, but doesn't specifically call out what types of evergreen trees. I believe that elsewhere in our, in our code, we have a, a street tree policy. Is that true? We should refer to that street tree policy at this point, so that the applicant is not in question as what an evergreen tree is. And I think that there might be some evergreen trees because this is a, well, let me look at the next page. Some trees, palms, for instance, I, I know, don't really provide any screening. The point behind the trees is screening. In other places in this policy, where we've been looking at screening, they describe the screening as a landscape buffer. It's hard for me to articulate this one, sorry. I just think that if you, if you, without describing the specific screening consistently, it's, it becomes confusing. It's confusing to me right this second. I don't have a good answer. I think I'm gonna let that one go. I don't have it strong enough in my head to fight for it. D one was something one of the members of the public brought up. Enhance paving for building entrances. Paving is not the only solution for building entrances. It can be any number of surface types, tile, for instance. So my suggestion would be that should perhaps say enhance paving or other treatments for building entrances and then go on to define what those treatments might be, such as stone, stamped concrete, tile, exposed aggregate, et cetera. And it also should define what we shouldn't use. For instance, gravel or decomposed granite or cinder blocks or that, that kind of thing.
Is there any issue with that one relative to objective guidelines?
I, I think strengthening the description, which is what is enhanced and what is not, helps the process.
And the, it could be as simple as colored concrete versus concrete, because we don't necessarily want to make these expensive. It's, the point is to make-
Do you want to add that in there?
Yeah, colored concrete could be fine as well. The, the point is just to differentiate the entrances, I believe.
I'm, I'm supportive.
That's fine.
Good. Then, this is a fairly abstract one, but E one A describes common open space amenities. And it should state that common open space amenities are to be on the southerly or easterly sides of the building because the north side of a building is cold. And you never hang out on the north side of your building. If you ever see any public open space in Moro Bay on the north side of a building, I, I very much doubt it. And on the, on the northwest side, Moro Bay is windy. And so in, in my opinion, in Moro Bay, the public, the common open spaces should be on the sunny side, the warm side of the building, which is not the west and the north, it's the east and the south. And I realize this is fairly subjective and-
Well, but it's, it's good architecture. I think the difficulty is a lot of projects can't always do that.
That's the exact issue.
The problem I have-
I mean, like, I see it in other jurisdictions where they put this beautiful open space amenity on the wrong side and it doesn't, never gets used.
I'm with you. I mean, maybe we put them in and then if, they make a case why they can't do it, but-
We can't, we can't have anything where there's the case where you can't do it.
Yeah, I mean, that's the hard thing about all this.
They want to fight the objective design guidelines and they come to Planning Commission and we say, okay, you're right, we agree. But if they don't want to fight them, then-
Yeah, but it's not a, what Scott's saying, it, you gotta check the box. How would you guys handle this one? I mean, what you're saying is right. It's good. It's just hard to make that a- I mean, what you're saying is right. It's good. It's just hard to make that a, a, a formula.
Well, they could check, they could check the box and then come to-
They're saying, no. Like, in other words, let's say the project can't do it. If it's in there, what do you do?
If they can't do it, physically can't do it.
Yeah, yes. And, and you can, and if the, a project was of any size, you're gonna have scenarios where that's not, is absolutely not possible, you know, based on where the buildings are located, you know? I mean, I'm just, I was just actually thinking the, you know, the four to one-
Can you make a recommendation? No.
Any ideas?
Yeah. You, you, not, not to be objective. And one of the, the ideas of, if you can't, that's because, oh, you've used up too much space with the building. Well, that's the whole purpose of these, is say, no, you just can't fill the lot with the building, you have to provide space for this. Or, you can go make an argument through a different pathway and not use the objective standards. So, do have something definitive, although I have to agree that not every location, the southwest side is the best location.
So, could we put a percentage to it? 70% of the open space should be, 60%, 50%, you know, something like, would that help the, the discussion?
That, absolutely, that is a process.
So, my suggestion would be 75% of open space should be in southerly or easterly.
Talking about form-based codes.
So, a, a quick question. As an architect, I have to live by these guidelines, too. What happens when I'm designing and I can't do it on this project? I can't come to you and say I need, I can't check this box. How do you handle that?
Well, it depends, because there's some things written into the different pieces of legislation that say, if there's something that makes them not be able to build the project or do the number of units they want, then you can't do it. So, it just depends. I mean, like, you know, there's a, there's, the, the legislation is not all the same, right?
Keep in mind, I'm not talking about private open space. I'm talking about common open space. So, if we're gonna be building common open space, we shouldn't put it in the sucky spot, you know? We should be putting the private open space, sure. I understand the building typology may require the open space for private spaces be in the wrong place for comfort.
I'm, I'm with you. I just think it's hard when you've got 100 different opportunities, and if it doesn't fit, there's other priorities in terms of where you put that space, too, right? Security, other things.
You start building, you're at the doorway of building more complexity into your ordinance here. And the way you get that flexibility and your target is you create options. You must provide one of these three things. I don't know what those three things are, but one of them is south-facing common open space.
Well, maybe we can put that on the side for-
Indoor open space. I mean, I don't know what that-
Can you guys put that on a side burner, or maybe there's more things that fit, fit into that option list? Along the same lines, I guess, I, I believe that open space should not be along arterial streets, because children might accidentally run into the arterial street, and I don't wanna see that. I'd rather be, see the, the arterial, those open spaces away from arterials.
Same problem.
Your, your statement actually proves the problem with the last one. What if that is the southwest side of the property?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Sad, but true. Okay, I'm gonna let those go. I have to gather my head here for a second. Page 5, E2B, Screening With Landscape And Structural Elements. The first sentence says a private open space may be screened by, should that "may" instead be "shall"? Because a "may" means they don't have to do it.
Right.
I think it should be a "shall."
There shouldn't have been a "may" in there.
If we have consensus on that, "shall" rather than "may." E2B currently is written, "Private open space may be screened by a landscape buffer or dense evergreen shrubs or vines, a minimum of 4 feet in width and 4 feet height." So, this is essentially saying that these buffers must be 4 feet tall. Exactly. That's what it's saying in these words. So, my suggestion is that you should be saying a minimum of 4 feet in height, so that it can be taller.
And that may be the intent of the "may." We will allow for screening up to, and that may be language that needs to be clarified in here.
I don't, say that again, Randy, I didn't get that.
I'm not the writer of this, so I might be stepping on toes here, but the intent of the word "may" may be indicating the option to provide, or this is the limits of that screening.
Well, the way I read it is that they don't have to, because they just, you may, you may screen it.
I, and I think there's clarification that, in that language, that is-
Yeah, I'm just-
That, that is merited, absolutely.
More objectivity.
Merited, that's all.
Okay, so, we good with that one?
Yeah, I hope. Do you, it's, it's, you guys agree? Okay. E2B currently conflict, conflicts, rather, with F4 Privacy. F4 states that landscaping shall obscure direct sightlines. F4 also states that plant selection and landscape screening container size shall be selected to achieve at least 50% of this height within three years of installation, but it never describes what this height is. So, I don't know, is, it, it, the sightline is all I can construe, is the, the height that they've alluded to, but the sightline isn't described. So, is that a sightline to a first-floor window, a second-floor window, a third-floor window, private areas? So, this, this needs clarification, the conflict between E2B and F4. I don't have a suggestion which one to take. That's up to us as a group to decide, but without that clarification, this is completely uninformative point.
I think this is another-
That's one where you-
Kimmy, Randy question?
Yeah, I, I, reading it, I agree that it could be more clear, yeah.
So, I guess I'm just asking for that, for, what is, what do we, what do we, you guys come back to us on that?
Provide a number, yeah.
Yeah.
And just to follow, this is exactly the input we're looking for here.
Yeah, I know.
Tighten this language up. This is where we see.
So, F1, Pedestrian Walkways, states that walkways shall be flanked on both sides with landscaping, and also that both sides of walkways shall provide trees spaced to shade at least 25% of the overall walkway length at maturity. I'm not certain why it says that the trees have to be on both sides of the walkway, because that might accidentally put the walkway away from the building, and where it might make more sense to have the walkway next to a building and the trees on one side. The point of it is to shade the walkway 25%. So, why do we need trees on both sides? I don't think we do. We just need trees to shade 25% of, of the walkway. Am I correcting that assumption?
Yes, that's a valid point.
Do I have consensus on that one?
Yes.
I guess just yell at me if you, if you don't have, if you don't say anything, I'm gonna construe that you agree, and then we can move faster. Walk, again, I'm saying, the walkways with, with landscaping on both sides might mean that we have smaller open space, and so that's why I'm trying to put the landscaping to one side optionally, so we have more open space. F4 Privacy, this 50% height question within three years, again, is mentioned under plant selection, but what standard is used to confirm that a given plant meets this unknown height? This is not objective. We need, we need to know exactly that height, you know? I don't, who determines, who says 50, who, who comes back three years later, you know? What's, is that something that we do currently in our code, where we go back on landscaping and say, "Oh, this thing's only half of what it was, said you were gonna be, now we're gonna have to shoot ya"? What happens?
It's, it's a common standard, and so you're looking at the trees and shrubs and things like that, that grow to that level and would make that height over time. So, you choose trees to do that. That's the idea behind it. And we could go back at some point and say, "Oh, you didn't comply," and say, "No, you need to redo it."
But nobody ever does.
I've done it twice in my entire career, doing this for 20, I'll just say plus years, and leave it at that.
It just feels like it needs more specificity. So, if we could refer to some table of what, of who, of height that is referred to by some botanist, or some arborist, or whoever refers to these things, so that the person can say, "Well, this tree meets this height in this many years." Is that a standard across the industry, or is that something that one guy says 25 feet, one guy says 30 feet, and then there's the argument between two experts?
We do, we do look at the planting plan and the, and the plants that are proposed to see if they would meet that, that standard. We do, we do look at that. That's a, that's a common thing.
Okay.
You never do plant container sizes? Should we do that?
You, you could do container sizes as well.
That gets expensive.
We've done that as well.
Yeah. In an affordable housing project, I don't, I mean, to, to require them to do 24-inch box-
We, we still do it.
I, I, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna push that. So, on Page 6, 17.31.030 Building Design, we've already discussed this, the, the, we don't need to go through that anymore.
Where are we now?
That's the one typology being shown in the document.
You're on Page 6 now? No.
Page 6 of the, of the, my notes are referring to pages. I don't have page numbers on mine, sorry.
Well, no, it just says Page 6 is it.
At the top, yeah, but I'm referring to Page 6 in the, in the objective design standards. But that first note there, we've already discussed that.
I'm gonna have to break. Why don't you guys keep working?
Okay.
Or do I need to pause the meeting?
As long as you can, if these two agree, we have a quorum.
Okay, yeah, go ahead, and then my, then my turn.
The, the next points are back, the, again, are down to definitions. Human scale and visual interest are terms I don't think are clearly defined. I think those should be defined in our definitions. They're clear to architects and planners, maybe, but visual interest is absolutely subjective, and if we're using that as the term in this document, it, it's, it's, it's not very objective. So, maybe we just eliminate that word, visual interest, and replace it with something else, or those two words.
Thoughts on that, Randy, Kimmy?
Yeah, I, I agree of, of the two, visual interest is more like wiggly. It's, it's a little more wavy. Human scale, I guess we could try to tie it to, you know, the average height of a human, the average walking pace of a human, those things.
It's ambiguous as to what it, I understand the term, human scale, but what it means in reference to wherever it's been put in a sentence. It's one of those terms that, well, is this human scale right here? I don't know, do you know? You know, this, this doesn't, it doesn't mean, what, as a measurement, human scale, are we referring to the, the distance between my fingers? Are we referring to difference? It's, it's just too subjective of a term, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I won't belabor it, I just think it's-
We can take it out if there's consensus, yeah.
What did you, what did you wanna do?
Mike, Commissioner Engraffia, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yeah, we're fine with that.
Okay.
So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna not talk about the next subject, I'm gonna let that one go. That's talking about building, building form, massing, and facade articulation. I think we've covered that with our lack of diagrams, or getting rid of the diagrams, I think.
Commissioner Meyer, just to clarify that last one, that is speak, that particular section is speaking to the purpose of this, so it is the, the, that in effect is not an objective standard. It is saying, this is what these objective standards are trying to achieve. So, you may choose a different language there, but we're not specifying it must be human scale. That, that the intent of the rest of that section on Building Design speaks to how you achieve that, is what the, the structure is.
Yeah, no, I agree with, I see what you're saying, and sometimes I tend to get two in the weeds, and maybe I'm getting two in the weeds right there. So, I'm gonna back off on that one with the consent of the other two commissioners.
Okay.
So, we're back, we're not letting you two.
So, wall plane variation, on Page 7 of, of the ODS, B2, this is weird, because the, the, the second sentence in this section references that section which you are then reading, which is very confusing to the reader. But the way, the way it should be written is what I have in bold below, which says, "Wall plane variation, period. For building facade articulation on mixed-use projects, use this chapter, period. For building facade articulation in residential zoning districts, see Section 1707-040 Supplemental Regulations." The way you guys have crafted it is, took me a long time to figure out what you were saying, just because it's referencing that item which you are then reading.
Do you agree?
Yeah, we'll correct the reference.
Thank you.
Thank you for catching that.
B4, Corner Architectural Features. The word hierarchy, I thought, needs more objectivity. As written, this can be debated. What is superior, what is inferior? It's a bit too ambiguous. Something along the lines of prominent might be a more objective term, so that, in that specific location.
Kimmy, you good?
I, I have some ideas, but I'm not specifically flushed on, yes, yeah.
All right, so, the commissioners are nodding yes. You'll come back with something in the next draft.
Right.
I'm more concerned about create a sense of than what we're trying to create a sense of. I think that's a subjective statement, so, but, yes, there's a problem in both the language.
Yeah, just revolve, if you could resolve that clarity, I'll be happy. I don't care the, really, the word.
Let's, let's keep going. Yeah, we're good.
So, the, the, the next one, we have allowed, we have not excluded items in, this, I'm talking about roofline variation now. Item B6 on Page 8. Here's our opportunity, I stated, to eliminate certain typologies that may be undesirable without design review. Some designs, for instance, I wrote mansard, are very hard and difficult to make look beautiful. And so, I would rather just eliminate them from the get-go, so we don't have to worry about it.
So, you're suggesting no mansard roofs?
Correct.
Okay. Is that objective? It is, right? That's fine.
They just require a lot more work than other places to look great. Unless we're French, and speaking French, it's probably not the best place for a mansard roof. They're still free to chase a mansard roof through the design review process.
Well, no, no, there's-
So, B7 discusses flat roofs and parapets. As written, B7 specifically requires a parapet on a flat roof. But what's the point of requiring a parapet if there's nothing on the roof? The, the parapet design is designed, essentially designed to hide utility, AC, antennas, et cetera.
Oh, there's always gonna be vents and stuff.
Well, if, well, if, tell, tell Richard Neutre to put a parapet on his house, he's gonna laugh at you, right? It's, it's, you're excluding accidentally certain types of architecture, I believe, for instance, mid-century modern, for instance, deco, for instance, streamlined, by requiring parapets. And I don't wanna accidentally exclude, so I think that-
Well, two minutes of discussion.
Yep.
Good answer. Richard Neutre's not gonna be designing for us.
I understand.
And so, what happens is, a bad designer with no parapets, roof slope, I don't know.
Okay.
For, for larger multifamily projects, we're gonna get stuff that's coming out the roof, I mean-
Hardly ever do you get clean roofs. Hardly ever.
That's just the majority of what we get here. I understand exactly what you're saying, Commissioner Meyer, but I think that's-
Okay, this was, the, the point of these was to argue, and we're arguing, and that's good, and I agree. So, let's move on.
Okay, so, no on this one, right?
Did, did we get a, a consensus on the mansard roof? We were okay with that?
I think we're saying no mansards, yeah.
Thank you.
I just, I, I guess I just, I'll let that one go, never mind. I gotta get over my mid-century fetish. B7B states that parapets shall be capped with pre-cast treatment. I don't know that we have to go with pre-cast treatment. There could be any number of types of parapets. So, when we specifically call out pre-cast treatment-
What, what does that mean?
I don't know what it means. What is it? Where is it stated what pre-cast treatment is? There's no definition anywhere.
Does pre-cast mean pre-cast concrete?
I don't know. Doesn't say that.
Kimmy?
I think that's the intent, but that is pre-cast keepment, continuously, these are ors in here, continuous bounding, projected cornices, dentiles, or similar edge treatment.
I just don't like the word pre-cast treatment, because it's not objective. If you wanna say it, say pre-cast concrete, say pre-cast foam, say styrofoam, say whatever it is, but don't just leave it vague. If there's pre-cast treatments, let's call out what they are.
I think what it's trying to say is that, that's a, a pre-cast treatment is a more permanent suggestion. A lot of those other things mean you get a stucco lump?
Well, just define what pre-cast treatment means, then.
Okay. I like it. I think it's a fair inclusion.
So, if you look at the entirety of the, of 7B, we're not talking, we're not, we're not calling out the materials for any of those things. It says continuous banding, doesn't say of what. Projecting cornices doesn't say what materials. Dentiles doesn't say what materials. Similar edge treatments, I mean, so, that, calling it out for just that one thing seems odd to me. I mean, so that, calling it out for just that one thing seems odd to me.
Yeah, I get that.
I don't know, I mean, I, it's for you guys to make the decision, I just, I was just, I wanna look at the sentence. We're gonna define one thing in there, not the rest of them.
No, I was gonna go to the same spot, that there are a number of products that would meet the description of precast. And the intent of this is so you don't just have a flashing, cap flashing on there, and that's all that's left.
So like, in, in some cities, I've seen styrofoam precast cornices. And in a number of years, they fail. And so I essentially was fighting those.
Foam would not be considered a precast product.
So, yeah, uh.
So.
By whom? But, but that's not, that, unless we define what it is.
I think precast is, means, means cast stone, either concrete, or it could be one of the more.
Resins, they're, they're similar products, but they're not.
Complex stones, yeah.
I don't wanna accidentally create too much work or too much idiosyncratic detail. I just oppose to materials that fail.
I, I, in this particular case, if, if the goal would be to remove the foam option, I'd rather remove the foam option than define precast in a very limited manner.
I'll leave it to you all, I'm not gonna push it.
You're suggesting, one more time?
I mean, if the objective objection is to, the foam, or, or there's some other thing you'd like to identify as, hey, I found this looking ugly, failing, whatever the answer is there, let's define that and say, we can't have those.
Maybe as simple as, the, the parapets shall be built of durable materials, adding something like that, no?
That's, that's not specific enough for me.
You know what, I would put precast in quotes and leave it. Most architects understand what precast is, and it comes in a whole bunch of different materials.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll accept that. Street-facing entrances, C one A, this is seventeen thirty-one oh three oh C, C one A, street-facing entrances. This paragraph states, residential buildings located adjacent to the primary street shall have a ground-level common entry facing the primary street, unless the units are accessed by individual entries. So, what I'm worried about here shows up in a different location, in seventeen thirty-one oh three oh C two B also. Essentially, in, there's some low-income housing in other jurisdictions where rules like this have prescribed entrances on streets with no parking. And on, and so I would like to make an exception that if a building faces or is on a street which has no ability to park on it, then it's stupid to have the entrances facing.
I'm, I'm gonna disagree, it's, it's pedestrian, it's access, it reinforces the street. Oftentimes, you'll park in, under the building, but you still wanna have a front door.
Okay.
So I guess I would, I would wanna stay with this one, but, you know, other commissioners can weigh in.
I guess, as a, as a common entry, I would think that would be probably good. As an individual entry, I would say I would differ.
I feel the same, but for like a townhouse entry, I really, I always fight with townhouses that are facing the street that don't have entries.
Okay, so for, for private, for individual entries on a street which has no parking, the entrances do not have to face that street, that's what I'm trying to say.
I think it speaks to that, doesn't it?
Well, I'm, I'm saying no, I mean, for what it's worth, I, I think having a, when you have a street, it's not just about the parking. It's about putting doors on the street, rather than, you know, like.
Even though no one ever uses them?
I think pedestrians do, I think people do, I think it's not just about the parking myself.
I won't push it anymore.
Okay.
And this was brought up by.
Did we, what did we?
No. We said no to that.
No to that one.
Okay, thank you.
The next one is C one B one, building entry architectural treatments. Roof above the entry incorporating a change in roofline of eighteen inches, that's what it says right now. Roof above the entry incorporating a change in roofline of at least eighteen inches. That doesn't say enough to me, I think that needs to be more descriptive. Is that a horizontal change, is that a vertical change? A chain, and, a change in the plane of the facade is the implication, but it does.
Does that mean a projection?
Doesn't state that, it doesn't state that very clearly, so I'm just asking, essentially, I think the point, and this was brought up by.
It's meant to be height, so like, I believe the roof.
I, I don't even understand, what would that be, Kimmy?
So the, the change in height of the roofline, and it's.
I still don't get it.
Illustrated by the graphic below it, where, you know, you have that middle section above the entry. It's a certain height, then the next section of the building kind of comes down.
So it's a purely decorative, uh.
Oh, just a decorative thing?
So my thought was, my assumption.
It can be practical as well, like it allows for lofting, it allows for more light or more air. It's kind of up to the designer to play with that, I think.
I was under the assumption it was about protection from the elements, if it was raining.
Diagram, yeah, diagram makes it clear.
That's why I was confused by it, because if it's about, for me, it was, I was more, more concerned about protecting the person trying to put the key in the lock while the rain's pouring down on them. And I thought having eighteen inch horizontal projection wasn't enough. I was gonna say it should be three feet, which is actually, I think, agreed to, but one of, one of the letter writers in here said that an entry over stoop should be a certain distance in it.
So this is a, Kimmy, how do you wanna do it?
Yeah, we can write in more of a, a horizontal projection that's larger than eighteen inches, but this was meant to address height and kind of the emphasis of the entry form.
Well, I did, in that I was confused by it, it wasn't, I guess it's.
That's why the graphic is there.
Okay.
Yeah. For now, if we nix graphics, then that is not available, yeah.
So the next item is C one B I I I, three I's, which discusses porches a little bit. Typically, porches would be carefully discussed in a design review process. So I think it's a little bit imperative on our part to discuss what a porch is. And if you go to Hong Kong, you'll note there are a lot of porches on, and balconies, none of which ever got used by humans. If you go to many cities, they're just storage for bicycles and chairs and old bird cages and cats. And the, the, the nature of a porch in this context, I think, is a place for a human. And so if you're gonna, to talk about porches, I think porches need to be a certain scale, and they need to be a certain type. For instance, a porch that you enter and cross, the entirety of the porch to get from the step up to the front door, that porch is almost useless as a place to sit. But whereas a porch which is a cul-de-sac that you walk across the edge of the porch up to the front door, and then the people are sitting there on the bench next to the front door on the, on the cul-de-sac porch, those porches are much more usable. And those kinds of porches, I mean, if you talk, most architects will say that eight feet is the depth of a comfortable porch, but we're talking about affordable housing. So a private, one of the pub, members of the public brought up that a private porch, for one individual unit, should be, I believe they said five feet by eight, was it five by eight, Peggy? For a private, and for a public porch, a porch that serves more than one unit, it should be at least six by eight, just for the sake, so people can sit opposite each other.
Five by feet allows for chair.
Yeah.
So five feet is good.
But three feet isn't big enough, so a porch needs to be a minimum on an individual unit of three by five. And if it serves more than one unit, it needs to be a minimum of six.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
Sorry, sorry, it needs to be a minimum of five by eight on the individual unit, and six by eight. And I'd really like to say eight by ten, but I'm not gonna say eight by ten, because I'm trying to make them affordable, and it just takes up too much space.
Yeah, that's, that's big.
Yep. We have agreement there?
Yes.
Are you just specifying the porch? There were several options here that they could do.
I was just discussing the porch, I don't, the, the other options didn't grab me, and, and those are left as is. The next one is about, the next, there should be a, a, a next subject on this one, which I think it's, it's either four or five I's in a row. I can't remember, there should be, there should be another little bullet point here. Item I I I I I, that governs second-story uncovered deck cantilevers. I believe that these should be allowed to protrude into the front setback, not any other setback. I didn't say front, but I didn't, in my notes, but it should say front setback, two feet. In, in commercial zero setback locations, I believe that these uncovered deck cantilevers should be allowed to protrude over the sidewalk. In other words, over, over the public street, essentially. So long as they are located a minimum of twelve feet in elevation over the sidewalk.
So dumb it down for me, what are you suggesting?
I'm, 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 I'm saying that this type of housing, when it's right on the sidewalk, if, if it has a deck on the second story, that that deck can protrude over the sidewalk, two feet, so long as that deck is twelve feet in the air. So that a car, a camper or something pulling in doesn't accidentally, most cars pulling in wouldn't clip the bottom of that deck. But they're taking advantage, we're giving an amenity to the public, we're giving them more.
When you're saying sidewalk, is that the property line?
Over the property line, onto the public space, correct.
Can you do that?
I, we did this in San Luis Obispo, where in, in, in the one district, which is known as Little, Little Italy, the Broad Street Corridor, we allowed the decks to protrude into the public space. The intent being to create more amenity for the, for the residents, and, and without taking away property that the developer.
So isn't that a building and safety thing?
Look at the code for, for Broad Street Plan in, in Broad Street Corridor in San Luis Obispo.
We have to do a code analysis, see if it's allowed.
Yeah, most, most codes do have a method of, you know, applying for an encroachment through public works, because it is public property.
It also makes for a more interesting, when you, when you.
No, I like it.
Commercial zone like that, to have someone right there in your face, that's where, that's where the, if, if you were talking Jane Jacobs, she'd be in there yelling at her friend across the street from that zone.
So when you say should be allowed, again, that's, is that a box you can check?
That could be in this amenity thing along with the other one that I, I lost track of.
The, the list of, do two of these five, or three of these five, list? I mean, that's what that was under, was you had a choice of.
Yeah, and at the bottom line is, I'm trying to get, so that the interiors of these things can be as big as possible, so that we can get affordable housing. But not at the sacrificial, not at the, not by killing people's outdoor space. And this is only in a commercial zone, I'm not talking residential zone.
Okay, so I, I like where you're going, but we, I don't, I just don't know how you say it.
I understand what he's saying, it, it has been done in San Luis Obispo, I don't know the mechanism for making that legal, crossing the line, so that might be.
And it's usually, it depends on other things, it's been my experience, if it's occupiable, that's different, et cetera.
Has to be uncovered, uncovered outdoor space. And a member of the public brought up something about roof decks, which I'm gonna include here, because they suggested that roof decks should be located a minimum of ten feet from any non-street or rear yard, non-street side or rear yard. And that goes to privacy to your neighbor. A roof deck insults the neighbors quite often in, in many situations, and, and so I agree that those things should be ten feet, at least, from a, a rear street, a, 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 a rear yard or a side yard.
So if you're, just real quick, if you're like seashell, you're out in a, a building floating in a field that has a cul-de-sac, you get to it, you're looking out over not just the backyard, but the landscape. Would you not want a deck there?
I'm talking about this, the, the setback from, from the property line.
But I'm saying if the property line is adjacent to, I don't know, ag land?
When that gets rezoned.
Well, the chances, I mean, why would you not take advantage of the ag land and the view and all of that?
If it's adjacent to open space?
Okay, then you have to put a.
Or ag.
A qualifier on it?
You can, you can, you can do that, I doubt these are gonna be adjacent to open space.
Well, we were just looking at a.
Okay.
You know, project here a year ago.
Okay, you know, are you gonna carve out, would you call it rural lands, would you call it open space, would you?
I would call it open space, 'cause it's also nice if you're sitting on a park.
Is that open space, were we talking zoning open space, are we talking term open space, in which case we need a definition?
Scott, how do we define open space to include ag land, parks?
I, I think you'd have to put those specific qualifiers in there.
Would you?
I think they can take care of that.
Okay, is that a Kimmy and a, a Randy?
Committed open space is not gonna change, anything else has the potential to be upzoned at some time.
I'm gonna suggest at this point, we really do need to, you guys need to try this, because the commission, you know, we're going through this. We're in agreement, but we need to get the language from you, and then we'll, we'll respond to it.
We're almost done.
We don't need to write it for them.
Okay, so, the rest, this is, the rest of that page, I'm not, it's more, it's more chit-chat, it's not specific. Talked about foremost, so, so, our chairman in the past has discussed controlling the plate heights, the first floor in the downtown area, so that we don't create, uh, commercial spaces that feel like Starbucks and mini malls across America. And, and, and Morro Bay has particularly low plate lines in most of its commercial spaces in the downtown. We don't have that thirteen, fourteen-foot plate line that you see or more in, in many urban malls. And, and so, and I think that's quaint about our city. And so I think we should try to control the plate height in, in the street frontage, uh, uh, commercial spaces, that thirty-three percent, or whatever it is, that I think is, what is it? In SB three thirty, I think it's two-thirds residential, which means it's gonna be one-third something else.
You're suggesting this for a mixed-use building? And you would limit the first-floor plate to twelve feet?
Some number to be defined by us, is that the number you, you, in your mind, you're the one that came up with it, what was it?
In Morro Bay, it's actually less than that, but.
I would say ten, you know, the plate line, maybe eleven.
It's tough to get structure and.
Plate line, eleven.
Ten's tough, to get the structure, and, don't you think? For a retail space?
No, I own one.
Okay.
I, I know you can do it, twelve is, twelve is the max I will go to.
Okay, let's, let's, let's cut it in half, eleven.
Okay. Okay, eleven. And that's, that's essentially, that's the commercial space in a mixed-use project, like, like what SB three thirty talks about, that the commercial space should be limited to the first-floor plate of eleven.
Do you guys understand this one?
In the downtown?
In, in, in the, yes.
Because other commercial areas, I don't think it matters.
No, it's in the downtown core.
Okay.
I understand the direction, what the consequence is, you were creating a unviable commercial space.
The intent is to create a Morro Bay commercial space. Unviable, I don't give a crap what the developer wants, I don't want him to put us, you know, this mall-style building in Morro.
But just a quick question, I, I'm with you, a hundred percent, but does that still an objective design guideline? Because if I'm Starbucks, I can't move in there.
They will not move in there.
That's the whole point behind.
No, I'm just asking you guys, would you defend this as objective?
We would much rather have Ascendo move in there, or some other little local company.
Yeah, I, if, I think it's definitely objective, but this might be one of those standards where you could see a challenge on it, from someone who is saying, this precludes the type of development the state says I'm allowed to do. But.
With that, I'd say let's try it.
We're basing it on, we're basing it on a Morro Bay topology.
Let's try it.
Yeah, let's bring it.
I think definitely, you know, twenty twenty-three building code is, is gonna be tough with, with that height. Commercial spaces in Morro Bay that were established like well before then, that's, that's why we see them, but.
Excuse me, is that coming?
Yeah, let's do it.
Kimmy, I think.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go yes with, um. Oh, I'm sorry, Joe.
I didn't understand the response, does it mean that eleven feet, it's impossible to construct the structure, or that the developer does not want eleven feet?
No, the formula retail spaces, they want like twelve feet clear plus three feet of, of structure and open space to run the mechanical.
Then you got a wet seal.
I understand what they want, what I'm asking is, is it, is it impossible to create something with a lesser height?
No, but what it does is, it means a, a normal retail, that they always use formulas, they would never go into a space like that.
Understand that, but what would be the basis for a lawsuit that says, you're preventing me from doing it? Because he could do it, but he, but he would call it economically not feasible.
I think, I, I could see a case being made against that. I like the idea a lot, I just think a case could be made.
I think that's one of the more important points we've made as a commission, I mean, in this town, that's really, this town. I think that's one of the more important points we've made as a commission, I mean, in this town, that's really, this town is quaint, right? This town is not Bakersfield, it's not a big city, and we want it to remain feeling quaint. And that's one of the details, and I'll stop, get off my high horse there, it's actually your high horse, I just stole it.
Did you? Cool, as long as Kimmy's going to put it in there, I'm good.
Okay. The rest list talks about form-based code and stuff, and I don't necessarily think we should go off on that.
Well, no, I'm going to do form-based.
That's going to be your discussion, not mine, that's what, that's why I'm letting go, you're better at it. C, 1731-030, C2B, talks about individual unit entrances. And this is again talking about the no parking on the street, so we already talked about that. I won't go over that anymore. I believe that, in contrast to you, Mr. Chair, that there is a natural desire, what I'll call a desire line, it's not my term, it's somebody else's term, that the people approach the residents through, if you get off your bike, you park your bike in the bike rack, there's a desire line from that bike rack to your unit. And whatever that is, if that's the back door, then the back door becomes the front door if you're riding a bike. If you're on the sidewalk, the desire line is for the pedestrian, is like you described, coming in the front door, perhaps.
Perhaps, because a lot of people take their bikes inside. So it's, again, it's not 100%.
If you're in your car, it's from the garage or the parking spot to the house. So depending on your modal hierarchy, whichever mode you want to promote the most, in your case, this would be pedestrianization, which is great.
Well, that or a bike, when your friend comes over, he's got to pull his bike up, but he'll park it in a.
So while we're talking about bikes, just because it's part of it, and I think that there should be plugs located near bike racks so that people who have electric bikes can charge their bikes. The problem with that is those plugs would then become an area of electricity. And so then it comes down to where are the bike racks, are the bike racks near the units, in which case you can charge the bike in the bike racks. And this is a discussion that goes way off the deep end, and do we want to make that, or do we want to let it go?
We don't even require that in our zoning code, right?
Well, that's not the question, he's suggesting that it's a good idea, I believe.
Right, but I mean.
I believe it's a good idea, if I was a planning commissioner and you were bringing me a housing project, I would be, I would be requiring you to include, or I would be asking you to include charging for bicycles.
I'm up for it, if you guys think it's objective, let's do it, yeah, Mike?
Yeah.
We're good.
So the next one is a little bit discussion, vacant commercial zones are often attractive locations for vagrancy. And recessed commercial storefronts in vacant units become a public nuisance. And they can be, the same with trash areas and so forth. I think that it might behoove us to have a discussion with the police department around this subject. How do they feel about recessed storefronts, recessed hideaways where people can create little domains full of, full of trash and detritus if the property is vacant? I guess I'm, I'm questioning whether we want to demand recessed storefronts or whether, I've noticed a lot of jurisdictions where the, those stores which have recessed storefronts, the door front, the door, the doorways are being pushed out into the streets so there's not a place, because what happens, the public, the public right-of-way is slightly different than private property. On the public right-of-way, the police can enforce the person not to be sitting in front of, on the public right-of-way. If it's three feet off the public right-of-way in a recessed section owned by the property owner, that three-foot by three-foot section is, the police can't enforce any action on that property. That guy can sit there as long as that property owner allows him to sit there. And if he's, if the property owner's not paying attention, that could be months. And so this is an issue that's, it's, it's an awkward issue, but it's something, is that potential for the nuisance outweighed by the advantage of the recessed doorway?
I think in Morro Bay, I'd keep it.
As is.
As is.
Okay, oh, let it go, just a discussion item, and I wasn't promoting or de-promoting, I just wanted to bring it up.
Cool, cool.
The refuse area should be lockable. I think there should be required to put locks, or the ability to put a lock in a trash, trash area. And I won't belittle that any further, I just think that that should be lockable. That's it.
The last one, can we, is there any concurrence, I'd, nobody nodded their head or even, I didn't, it was a short nod, okay, sorry.
There is one additional, but I just bring it up because a member of the public brought it up, that stairways to roof decks should be a certain distance from the property line, I don't agree with that necessarily. I don't agree with, but I do want to bring it up.
She talked about that in stoops too, but the stairs, I don't quite understand it.
I like the stoop one, thank you for bringing it up, the stoops being a minimum of, bear with me, I think it was four by four and no higher than five feet above, from the bottom of the step to the top of the step. A four by four minimum stoop.
She talked about stoops and porches. Okay.
Do we have agreeance on the four by four and no higher than five feet on stoops?
Sure, go ahead and add that.
Okay.
Mike?
No, I'm done.
Joe? Okay, let me do my best. I would like to work with form-based zoning in some kind. And what I'm thinking, and Kimmy and Randy, I'm asking for your advice. I'm saying that there's one sort of form-based zoning around lot-line projects. So if you're on Main Street or Morro Bay Boulevard, I'm saying the form-based zoning, and we can talk about these numbers, but in the simplest of way, the first floor would be 100% of whatever is allowed. The second floor would go to 90% of that, the third floor would go to 70% of that. And if there would ever be a fourth floor, it would go to 50%. I hear you, but I'm putting it in in case, wow, you got to say it.
The first location was Morro Bay Boulevard, and then the other one was?
Main Street.
Main Street, okay.
And I don't know about those numbers, I'm just saying it. The second one is more like your diagram here, which I like your diagram, the way you guys have called out the setbacks. Works great for two stories, what happened when it becomes a three-story? So if, like when we were looking at that project on Shell, they were looking at three-story buildings, and they're sort of isolated and floaty. I think when you take that stuff and you make it three stories high, it has an awkward scale to it. Could we make the third floor in that situation? What did we make it before, 70% of the, of the lower floors? That would be a way to formulate form-based zoning for those projects. Kimmy, Randy, do I see any support? No, I want to hear that you guys like it, and then I'll ask them. You guys are writing the thing.
Well, so the first one about floor area, I think I understand pretty well, and we can implement that. I, I don't know if I wrapped my head around the second point.
I was going to ask the same question, could you repeat that?
Oh, for the second scenario?
Yeah.
I'm looking at your diagram right here, and you have a pretty good formula for in-and-outs where the, it's a vertical massing, right? And then there's a recess and a vertical massing, you've called it out in module. What I'm concerned about is a lot of the affordable housing buildings will look at, if they're larger, easily go to three and four floors. That's the formula that the developer loves. So in anticipation of that, I think our zoning only allows three floors? Like in Shell, what would that allow, that would only be three, right? Or is it not clear? Scott?
Well, currently, we have, for the, in the downtown area, along the core.
No, I'm talking not downtown, I'm talking like the, the, the upzone we were trying to do on the 45 acres, was in that shell.
Oh, seashell, oh, sorry.
Seashell, seashell.
Yeah, you would probably, I mean, I guess you could do a whole lot of excavation and get up to a 4-4, we don't limit the stories, it's just by height from the average natural grade.
Right.
So if you pull a grade down, you could have.
And then if they did, you know, the density bonus thing and they get an extra 10 feet, do we need to deal with that?
I mean, I think the idea with your 4-4 does that, I mean, with the 4-4 idea.
All right, but I'm talking about the vertical one now. So this is what you might see out in a free-floating thing, that's probably not going to be a zero lot-line project, less likely.
Yeah.
Especially with the garages. But if you get to three floors, I don't, I guess I'm objecting to the idea that you go those vertical things three stories. That gets an awkward proportion for Morro Bay.
Are you saying wedding cake it, what are you saying?
Yes.
70%?
The third floor would be pulled back 70%.
So it would be pulled back to 70% of the second floor, or 70% of the first floor?
I'm saying that, well, I'm thinking one and two are the same percentage in this model, so it would be 70% of, of the first floor. I mean, I'm, I'm open to other suggestions.
I would suggest that, why start, I mean, you could start at any number, you could start at the second floor. And I mean, in many jurisdictions, start, you know, seven, seven feet on the second floor, another seven feet on.
Well, you could, but I'm, I'm just saying that that formula works for me, that diagram, where it's like a townhouse or something, right? I think that works, but when you make it three stories, it doesn't work anymore.
And we would apply the three stories, that would be just to any development that we were doing, that got to that, like you were saying, seashell estates, and we'll pull the site, when we get to that third floor, it'll be 70% of the first?
Right.
Okay.
So 70% of the area, is that what we're saying?
70% of one floor. Because I'm thinking by your diagrams, floor one and two are basically the same.
Yeah, if those represent 100%, the one above it is 70%.
Yes.
It could be pulled all the way to the front and still have a three-story facade.
Yeah, that's why my question about the wedding cake.
Then I think maybe we should add, I have here adding language that it has to deal with the front. Typically, people on the side, they'll want to go tall. So I'm saying that the stepbacks would be on the front.
I think to allow some for, to not be cookie cutter and to not result in the same thing over perhaps language that said, 60, 70% of any elevation shall have the third floor setback X feet. So you get articulation in there and consequently, you're going to come up with a number that is.
Okay, so 60% of any elevation would be set back, I'll say that that could be a lot, three feet.
Is it an average?
No. You're saying that's the formula?
Typically, it'd be like a minimum of three feet, so along a length of 100 feet, 70 feet of that is set back at least three feet, but the other 30 feet could be, it's getting late, could be right at the, the front of the building.
I would say this differently, I would say you take an, you take the two, if you're talking side setbacks, for instance, you're given an average, on the top floor, it's, it's 70% of the, it's hard to articulate this, the total combined setbacks, let's say you have a five-foot setback and a five-foot setback. And your, your upper floor should be stepped back so many feet on one side or the other, I don't care which side it's on, to create an overall setback of a larger, of a larger dimension, without giving.
That's a valid approach too.
Like the city of Carmel does it like that.
Say it again.
It's hard to articulate, essentially, you have a combined setback of some number of feet. And you know, a minimum of, whatever the minimum, I'll say the minimum is five feet, I don't know, it depends on the zone you're in. But in, on the top, upper floor, you have a combined minimum of, let's say, 15 feet, which could be five feet on one side and 10 on the other, or it could be two.
Got it.
Seven and a halfs, that, that gives, gives more opportunities.
So this is combined, this is just the third floor, we're talking about combined, which you guys have already established for floors one and two, right?
The intent being to get a total of 70% on the third floor, I don't care how you craft it, but the idea being to give them as much leeway in one way or the other.
But you're asking to address that on all four sides then, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
In your previous.
Not have the third floor be set, you do want some setback in the front side.
I don't. Yeah, that's a good point, maybe the front set, maybe the front setback is, this is where the sausage making at 10 o'clock at night gets it. We should come back to this one in the next meeting.
Okay, so why don't we, we're giving this to Randy and Kimmy.
We're bouncing around, yeah, maybe a couple.
Make a proposal for the next meeting, this is what I was hoping to get tonight, actually, was this kind of thing from you guys. So let's, let's see it come at the next meeting.
I heard someone mention, reference Broad Street Corridor in another, yeah, in another topic, and they've done this.
Well, and I would really.
I think we have some examples to look at.
Fantastic, and I'm really open to your, you guys do this all the time, so I, I mean, the reason I was asking for your advice before the commissioners was to benefit from your experience. And then make sure that we're all nodding, that's okay.
The residential design standards for the city of Carmel by the sea have pretty good language for that exact subject.
Okay, and can I just throw something out that I?
Sure, sure.
It's just a, a term that was brought up during the housing infrastructure plan, you know, there's going to be a regional approach that we've all bought into, and the term was affordable by design. So I don't know what that would look like ultimately, when it ever, it kind of sounds like what he's doing. But the region, you know, may use that approach to meet its affordable goals. What is it, I don't know what it means, but whatever, all I'm saying is I listen to them talk about it, but that's something that they're, might, might do. So I just thought I'd throw it out there, that the region's looking at that.
Does anybody know what that is?
Yeah, I mean, we, there's an effort going on right now regionally in the county for that, it doesn't really apply to objective design.
Okay, good, I see, that's what I wanted to know, he said it doesn't apply.
Thanks, Mike, Joe, did we get complex enough?
And for the benefit of Randy and Kimmy, Bill, I mean, he's been a planning commissioner 10 years in two different cities, 10 years, two different cities, chair, chair, Santa Clara, Los Angeles. This guy's been a county planning commissioner five years, he's been a planning commissioner. See, what I was trying to get at, our council has little or no experience in planning, all right? So we're trying to give them something that they know we've done our work with. Because if you work with them and try to get through this process, it could be five to 10 times as hard. If they know we've done it, yeah, five minutes, they'll approve it in five minutes because, because they trust us, I'm just kidding. What I'm saying is, I just hope now, you know, you understand what I was trying to say at the beginning, that they're going to put a lot of emphasis on what we give them. So we wanted to make sure you, you gave us something.
After all this effort, because this is, this is not how I like to do it, but I think we got it done, Eric, thank you.
I think we did heavy lifting tonight, and I believe we could write something from this. Right? So maybe we could get here one more meeting, but it's not.
Oh, no, that's the intent, we stayed here, we, I'm actually disappointed, I don't think you guys addressed these comments, and I wish you had. I don't think it was up to us to write this tonight, that's my perspective. So I'm going to insist on the next meeting, we get a submission that we can then approve at the next meeting based on this effort. I would be really disappointed if we don't have a revised document.
Yeah, that's understood, yeah, the intent was not to be not responsive, it was just to make sure that you guys were agreeing.
I just think that a, that process neglected your responsibility. You could have gone through these comments and came back to us with specific questions that could have solved this a lot quicker. That's my take, this idea of sausage up front is not the way I like to conduct a meeting. Yeah.
Based on something that Betty pointed out, that I need to make a point about. I got to find it, sorry, the, the whereas. Number two, I do not understand where.
Oh, that's in the resolution, we'll fix that though. I know exactly what you're talking about.
The other thing. Sorry, it's been too long. Where we are, yeah, true and accurate in all respects, that, that, like for instance, SB 35 isn't applying in this, in.
It applies, it does apply in the area outside the coastal zone.
Those four lots on Sequoia.
But it's not, but it's not the driving force, so it doesn't mean.
Are we good?
Yeah, and I just want to verify with the chair, you're the, we don't have a meeting on the first, our next meeting is on the 15th, Scott?
Items for the first?
We don't, we don't know about.
We have items on the first, but this is coming on the 15th.
For sure, on the 15th.
That's the plan, yeah.
So we do have a meeting on the first, okay.
And let's see, we have a couple of things just to, I don't think there's any other stuff, but before, so we can let our consultants go. I do have expectations, which I think all the commissioners are. all the commissioners are looking for in the next meeting. We really do want you to polish these. We don't want to write it for you. But with that, let me say a big thank you for getting us through this, and we will make sure it happens in the next meeting. Commissioners, other comments to say thank you to?
Yeah, again, thank you. Sometimes I come across as being angry, and I apologize if I sound, but it's just, I get maybe excited, or this is an interest, this is a subject that really interests me, and so I tend to get animated. It's not anything to do with any personalities.
And the most fun for me is, poor Nancy, we made her stay late tonight, and that's, that doesn't happen.
And she's a consultant.
And Scott, thank you. The three of you get awards. That's really good. And we've got several people still on the Zoom. Thank you all. And I don't think there's any, just to wrap this up, new business?
I have one more. I would just say to the public that we have another opportunity to beat this up a little bit. So if you have more comments, I want to hear them.
Planning commissioner comments? Community development directors' comments?
All talked out. Thanks.
If everybody's in agreement, we are adjourned. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Joe. It's all your fault.